All right, it is six o'clock and we will go ahead and call Monday, April 24th, 2023 regular board meeting order. I'd like to welcome everybody who has come to participate tonight and observe. We'll call directors.
Monica Strahan present.
Roger Diller present.
Mrs. Keller present.
Eddie Van Amman present.
Jeremy Mask present.
We'll start with political allegiance. Ross Bluff.
Raj Bluff present.
All right, we'll go ahead and review the I-35 mission statement district priorities. The I-35 mission statement reads, "The Interstate 35 Community School District insists to develop lifelong learners and responsible, productive, successful citizens in a never-changing society." Distinct priorities. Number one, articulate and supportive research student incentive, pre-K through 12 vision for continuous school improvement. Two, engage in effective teaching and relevant learning for the 21st century. And number three, operate with fiscal integrity, efficiency, and effectiveness. We also have received the agenda and the motion and the second note to take action on the agenda during discussion. The motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
All set. To properly vote and second that we approve the agenda, all in favor, so by my eye.
Eye.
Opposed. And we'll go ahead and move on into the public hearing on the fiscal year 2023, 2024 school budget. We have introductory remarks on the 2023, 2024 school budget.
Okay, the budget was, uh, was published in the Madisonian on April 14th. I'm sorry, April 12th. The proposed budget was published in IRAS 18.7 states 212, which is our normal practice. It can be adjusted downward, but it cannot be adjusted upward. Publish just the law for any fluctuations that may occur. In the past, we, the board has approved it at 18.67375. That's very similar to this year that we anticipate that you would want to approve it at and adjust it to in June. So as you can see, we're preparing all the years since 2019. Very similar in all ways. The first one is the levy to fund combined district costs. That's very similar in percentages. The cash reserve or cash reserving at the maximum amount, which is, uh, which comes in at about, uh, 400 and I don't have any, they have a corner. 378 to 99 plus 66 to 3, so the total of that. And then we're fully funding the instructional support levy of $456,430. Management is the one that I would recommend that would be adjusted downward to make the grand total at 18.67356 in and in a year. And that would be right at corner 1,000. That's what we anticipated. We're recommending that the PEP will be funded at the full amount, which is standard practice at 1.67. And debt service, that's to pay for the geo bonds and also the pre-levy of 755,000, which will help reduce our debt as Matt Gillespie answered our question last month. And with that, yes, we'll talk a lot later when we get to that point of the resolution where to ask for 755,000 for that. And so that in all four years, and if we would do that, the first year, uh, it's 500,000, second year was 500,000, current year is 700,000, and then we're asking for 755,000 for the next year. And that will save approximately 800, 827,000 dollars in interest for those four years pre-levy. So do we have any questions?
All right, are there any questions? Are there any questions or comments from the public at this time on the proposed budget?
We're going to be funding for school resource officer in next year's budget.
Could you come to the microphone and introduce yourself? Good question.
Are there any funds for school resource officer in next year's budget? Yes, we did allocate for that. And the certified budget is, is not necessarily the amount that you're going to spend. Usually you ask for authorization to spend more and then it may become back and if we feel that we're going to overspend, then we ask for an additional amount or else you give it up in your audit for filing those funding.
Are there any other questions from the public? Are there any other questions from the public? Are there any other questions from the public? Not hearing any, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. All right, that brings us to our open forum and we do have a number of people who have signed up to speak. And when I read your names, if you want to come on the microphone and, uh, address us, that would be great. Brian Azan.
Thank you, Board, for all you do to serve. It's a thankless job. My first question here is from the audience. How many of you in this room are okay with mediocrity in your life? Please raise your hand. How many of you have ever awakened and set your daily goal as being mediocre? How many of you want your kids to receive a mediocre education? Please raise your hand. I'm not surprised that you didn't. The issue we currently face today, total turnover of administration, teachers leaving the district, inability to detract from teachers, ultimately the highest number of referrals to principals that our current administration can handle. The addition of more teachers, coaches, and administration all over it than we've ever seen. More parents open and rolling their students out of the district than in years past. I-35 is in the news more for negative reasons than ever in the history of the school district that I've been here. When an organization isn't performing, where do you start? You start at the top. Our superintendent, school board president, last five years. Why? Because they've successfully perpetuated the degradation of this situation. Number one job of a leader, to build future leaders, not make all decisions. We do not need rules like forget your pencil today, verbal warning, forget your pencil tomorrow, go to the principal's office. How do we prepare children to be successful? By not checking daily work. Life is a struggle. You show up every day ready to succeed and be accountable. Lowering the bar only rewards mediocrity. Sending blanket emails to parents saying your child may or may not have done one of the following things, disrupt them in class on their phones. Please talk to them tonight. This teaches what? Having a superintendent demand removal at stop sign in front of the school is not her job. Every issue we face right now, it's from Jerry Mask and Sherri Dutton, their inability to empower professionals here in our school to lowest levels and inability to lead and inspire. Example after example, of small things are raising their ugly heads. The public is confused and frustrated. This lack of leadership. Jerry Mask has been instrumental in this confusion. Ms. Dettlinger is most likely an amazing teacher, however, not a leader. Whether or not proactively addressing issues with local law enforcement, helping to empower teachers to have better control on their classrooms, the test is over, it's time for change. The fact is that our agenda that I is to approve a contract for an individual who resigned their position prior to the position being available is very interesting at best. The former principal was on paid administrative leave on the 16th, pending a hearing on the 27th. The finalists submitted their resignation to his Board of Education shortly after the 16th. The board waiting for him to accept that resignation was on the 27th. The I-35 board met for three hours at night, I can tell you. It should have only taken about an hour if it was easy to understand what was going on. Then our board president, Jerry Mask, asks for letters to be sent out to support from our board for this leadership. Then teachers are to sign a letter of support. What happens if they don't agree? That creates skepticism and division within our staff. This whole thing stinks on every level. I do not believe Sherri is intentionally doing this. She's doing the best that she can, but our kids deserve better. Our teachers deserve better. Confusion, uncertainty, and hesitation are symptoms of lack of leadership. Taxpayers deserve better. It is time for change. We had an amazing leadership and progress prior to Mask and Dettlinger. Anyone who wants to go back to the way it was, let me know. I know the formula because I was on the school board that inherited this mediocrity 17 years ago. I was on the board that turned this district around and it took about a decade. It doesn't happen overnight. My call to action is table this decision tonight to accept this recommendation to hire this principal until further understanding can be understood as to the timing, connection to other administrators within our district. We owe it to this good administrator to be able to have all questions resolved so that he can or she can come into this district and have the staff support. Secondly, do not extend Ms. Dettlinger's contract. Sherri, please do not run again. Dan Hutton will break balance and leadership for these kids again. He does it every day in a multimillion dollar company that he started from scratch. And to the other three board members, Ms. Strange, Ms. Keller, and Mr. Genoy, stay the course and listen to your gut. I remember what it was like when I was a new board member dealing with the same exact confusion. This is why a school board member exists, is to be dissenting. Eddie, you're an amazing individual, nothing but respect for you. And it is time to let maybe another parent lead and be a part of this. Nathan Gibson will do an amazing job of helping with this much needed turnaround. I love this district. All of my kids graduated from here, my mother graduated from here, my grandmother is in this school district. I moved here to help my family have a difference. So my family's moved on. My daughter lives here, my granddaughter will serve in this community and be a part of this school district. I love I-35. I plead red, white, and blue. I have paid the price. I am a mayor, I've been mayor before, I will give up my time. I have no dog in this fight other than the kids and the future of our school district. Thank you.
Nathan Gibson.
Member of the board, it's good to see you again. Brian, thank you, it's amazing, heart, act, and ball. I just want to address a couple of things on the agenda tonight that you guys are going to be focusing on. One of them, I think Sherri, you had on there a key piece of the legislation, SF 496 in particular, that was signed, uh, I'm sorry, passed in the House and the Senate, and it's going to the governor and she's going to sign it. For those of you who don't recall, this particularly relates to the book Tricks that I brought to you guys to have removed from our library, the pornography and the one where the reconsideration committee recommended that we keep it in our library and then you all voted to keep it in the school. Instead of fighting that war here, we went to the legislature, they passed it. When the governor signs it, you guys, at that point, the decision's out of your hands, you'll have to have it removed along with 12 other books that are in our library that shouldn't be in our library. So Sherri should have a good list of what that is, the law's pretty specific. So I would encourage you actually not to wait. I think you have until January 2024 to remove it. I would get done much sooner than that to show the community that you are interested in driving our values and ensuring our values are in place. I think that would be a great signal for the board to send is to not wait until January 2024 to have them removed. The other thing, school resource officer. I had to go back and look at the board meetings for the last, I guess, year and a half, two years. I've been addressing them, as you guys know, I've been here talking, every board meeting that I could, unless we had a track meet. And I brought this item up six times. Six times I've been talking for two years, asking to get a school resource officer or armed staff or allow staff to be armed. Tonight, I see you have an action item. It's not really clear what exactly we're actioning on, but I would encourage you to action, to appoint the school resource officer, to approve funding, the school resource officer tonight at this board meeting. We don't want to delay anymore. We've been talking about it for a year and a half. I think you've had two, maybe three closed-door sessions on it. Time for tops done, time for actions here. So please, action and approve that. Bonus points, if you can actually pay Sherri Barnes to be here himself, that would make me a lot more comfortable. So with that, I think for the first time officially, I'll give you guys two minutes 40 seconds back. Appreciate your time.
Rich Butler.
Good evening. Well, I think we had agreed I wasn't going to speak this evening tonight. I didn't bring those, but the missus signed me up and I don't want to miss an opportunity to, uh, to address the board. So the reason I'm here this evening is to support my wife, who's going to talk to you a little bit more about standard-based grading and the pitfalls that are associated with it. So I would only delve into that. I first want to say, uh, we still like it here. Our in-laws still live here, so I'm assuming that they still like it here. There's a lot of things going on in the district that are good. My daughter Riley signed up for that track program that's offered for the elementary. I think that's brilliant. I spoke last time about the reading and the vending machine and again, that's, that's brilliant. The standard-based grading is a, it's a, it's a bad idea. I think it was Mark Twain that said, it's, it's easier to fool people than to convince people that they've been fooled. You can keep your dog, the shop stops free. Inflation's transitory and standard-based grading works. My question to you is, when? When? Where? Des Moines has been doing it since 2010. When might we anticipate success, ladies and gentlemen? Why would we ground that here? This is a rural school. We have rural values and we want to keep it that way. So I would, I would ask that the board consider this. I would ask that you vote on it. I would ask that you vote on it publicly because November is just around the corner, ladies and gentlemen. And I think the voters and the public deserve to know what your position is on this before we subject our children to this. Before we subject our children to this. My kids don't need leniency. They don't need your help that, in that regard. They need discipline and structure. I need you to hold them accountable. Tell them, kids, well, for instance, this evening, you could all go home right now and tell your own children, you no longer have to do homework and you can take the test as many times as you'd like. Raise your hand if you're going to strick home and tell your kids you're going to do that. Idea. It's a horrible idea. And I know because I've made a lot of bad decisions myself. So I know when I see it and this is a bad decision. It's not right for the district, it's not right for our kids. I taught at three different universities, ladies and gentlemen, and if you send a kid to me, whether I was at Iowa Central, Duena Vista, or DMAT, they failed the test, they get an F because that's how life works. You don't get to keep retesting. And it certainly don't work for your employees. So again, I ask you, I'd see you spend the time on this. Look at, look at the research, show me the success stories, then vote on this so the public, where each and every one of you stand. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good evening.
Good to hear. Dan Hudson.
Thank you, guys. So I've had the opportunity in the last couple of weeks to spend a few hours in the school here and there, kind of get to know a little bit of what I've seen going on and everything else. And a couple of questions I have for the board and I'd like to address, everybody is, what is our plan going forward with mental health? And what I mean by that is what are we going to do? Ever since COVID, a lot of these kids are obviously not exactly right. And I don't feel like sometimes we're taking mental health as serious as we should. I don't know who all knows this or anything else, but I know people that know my family and I'm not going to speak on that. But we are very, very in tune with what happens to children that don't get the helping. And I'm very, very worried as a school district that we are not doing what we should be and holding people accountable, be it administration or teachers, to help with the mental health issues that we're having. And I'm including bullying, kids saying things they shouldn't be saying in school, any of that stuff. If someone needs help as this community, I love this community, I grew up here, my family's been here over 50 years. I truly love this community. I, a lot of you know who I am. All of our families have done stuff together, have been to church together, what have you. We need to get together as a community and make this right. Like, we need to help each other. But what I've seen two weeks ago, and I've read, and I was, I can't speak on any of it, but I can tell you, we did not help the people we needed help. And that cannot happen. And I urge you guys to look into what I'm talking about. You can ask the assistant leader about it, but I would like you guys to look into it and you tell me what we're going to do to make it better. Because I can tell you, if I'm sitting in your seat next year, it will be better, I can promise that. Because we cannot fail children. We can't have stuff going on where we're worried about what our principal did, what they said, and everything else, and in the midst of all that, have an issue at the school like we had. We were more worried about what was going on with some grownups' job than we were taking care of the children. And what is our number one goal? To raise good young men and women. I appreciate your time.
Jerk Bob.
Good evening. I would like to thank the I-35 school board members for all of their time and work over the last couple of years. I know we've endured a lot of challenging moments, but thanks to all of you, along with our admin team, our certified staff, and our support staff, we have been able to work through these. I appreciate all the time and energy everyone has put forth to help our students succeed. As we all know, along with challenges in life, there are also successful moments. This evening, I would like to highlight some of those successful moments here at I-35. As a parent, as well as a staff member, I've had the opportunity to see students succeed personally. Our administrative team, along with our certified and support staff, have created a caring and nurturing environment for our three school buildings. These dedicated, hardworking, and committed staff members are making an impact on our students, and here are some examples for you. In our elementary this year, they have really come together and they have set very high goals for our students as well as our staff. Their motto is better together, and they have shown that. They have knocked the trust, trusted adult goal out of the park. If you are ever in our elementary end, I invite you to look at the bulletin boards that are outside the office as well as the bathrooms in the lunchroom. There are so many pictures with a kid and a trusted adult in these areas that it just puts a smile on your face. I, as a staff member, have the privilege of walking down these halls almost every day. I receive high fives, I receive hugs, I receive smiles, and I receive good mornings. This is just very overwhelming. The staff here for the elementary has also had two sleepovers for both boys and girls. I know from personal experience, the boys lock-in that they held was very successful and those kids had a blast. Our Donuts for Grown Ones was a huge hit again this year with our students, even if Mother Nature tried to rain on our party. The elementary staff has been working towards a very lofty literacy goal and is very close to achieving this goal. During the wind time, every student is getting targeted level, grade level instructions in literacy and students have grown a ton over the past year. I've seen this growth personally with my own two students that are in elementary. Our elementary staff is currently ramping up for summer school and looking forward to the end of this year and looking at setting new goals for next year. I'm really excited to see what they can accomplish. Our middle school, on Friday, April 21st, the eighth grade students did a community service project here in Truro. They helped clean up the different areas around the community and was a great success. The fifth graders will be going on a field trip soon. They were invited to an Ag for Kids Day. There will be approximately 250 fifth grade students attending this event from Winterset, Earlham, Orient-Maxxburg, and I-35. They are also working on part, word parts, fluency, comprehension goals. We've had nine seventh and eighth grader students participate in an auditorium this past year. On May 9th, the sixth grade science fair will be held here where during the day, staff members can go and visit and look at the students' projects. And in the evening, the community is invited to come see the projects and talk to each one of the students about their submission and what they have done. On May 12th, the fifth grade students will be featuring famous Iowans here at I-35 and they will have a wax museum that will be set up. For our high school, they had prom on this past Saturday and juniors and seniors attempted this. It was a huge success and there was a great time had by all. We would like to thank all of the volunteers that made prom and after-prom ex success. Both of our track programs have won invitations, invitational meets in the last couple of weeks. Our boys golf program has one of the highest participation numbers in years and they will be hosting two golf meets, which is something that is not happening here at I-35. To conclude, I just wanted to give everybody some positive feedback and highlights from the district from my point of view. We've all heard many other pieces of information over the past couple of years. I challenge everyone here to go the extra mile to really listen to each other, respect each other, and work towards togetherness because we are better together. Please know we have a dedicated group of administrators, teachers, support staff here at I-35 who have a passion for you. Thank you.
Jess Buckland.
Communication is a thing that I hear a lot lately, from the community asking for more communication to the schools saying they will. Although it has improved, it's still lacking. I heard another threat was made at the middle school, but only middle school parents were informed. All of our schools are in one building. All parents should be informed of threats regardless of what building it's made in. I also heard videos posted recently speaking of Roadrunners being a family. I can't argue this as I've grown my family in this community and have an amazing village who makes my days easier and I know my kids are safe because of them. I believe our family here is lacking in own communication, so have forgotten their role and expectations in this Roadrunner family. The hierarchy is supposed to be our school board members, our superintendent, our teachers in our community. You could argue in a way our community is first as well because we elect our school board members to represent us, the people, as well as be our voice. It feels the board and superintendent placements may have been reversed recently. One example would be the releasing of our new principal hire, who has yet to even be approved by our board members. How does something like that happen? How does something like that happen? The lack of communication with regard to recent events is not the only reason I'm here, as I'm sure you already know. It still has to do with lack of communication, but on another detrimental subject: standard-based grading. I spoke on this several times, crickets, every time. We're coming up to the close of the school year and have yet to see any kind of slowing of the grades or community involvement in this decision. And I'm not looking for meetings over the summer when no one will be able to show, as they did last time, as we're all on break and we're re-feeling. Every time I speak, I have community members reach out noting they had no idea that this was happening and wanting to know about what standard-based grading is. This is not okay. One parent even asked if this is what was happening in the English class, and they could not tell what their child had all year nor how to help them improve their grade. Everything just said, "Grades are key." With the implementation of Infinite Campus, why add something else so huge on the plate? I use Infinite Campus at my school, and after almost five years, I'm still learning new things every day. It's a great system, but it takes time to learn. I emailed you all this past week with research information regarding standard-based grading, and I want to quickly highlight those things. With regard to the last meeting, and an educator noting that teachers give students any grade that they want, but standard-based grading would put a stop to this. To me, this sounds more like an accountability issue, not a grading issue. And how will this stop a teacher from giving someone a three when a kid should really only be adding two just because they don't have the time to reteach? We have a great teacher coach here. Understand? They should be the one helping to encourage these teachers to grade appropriately and hold them accountable when they're not. Yes, there's a lot of standards that teachers have to teach. However, it has always been told, "You do not teach to the standard, as you do not teach to a test." You want your student to retain and learn the information, not regurgitate what was given to them. There is zero proof this has been successful in any other school, so why would we bring it here to I-35? When researching, I often found the following things: Little consensus on what standard-based grading actually even means. Standard-based grading is implemented inconsistently due to varying and uneven guidance for standard-based proponents. It has led to educators leaving a school system or the school entirely lacking standard-based grading in time because of the lack of effectiveness, uncertainty, confusion, and frustration. And it is the amount of extra work that has to be done not by administration, but by our educators, educators who are already overworked. No grading system by itself has ever been found to improve student learning. Standard-based grading is largely unstudied, hence why there's no data to show that it works. It has also been shown that this creates a stronger relationship with grades and external measures. However, there's no evidence that actually shows improvement of student achievement. To successfully implement standard-based grading, there has to be informed conversations about what makes this effective and better than the current grading system, something we have not done. As a history teacher, I can assure you that any great idea at the end of history that's had to be forced or pushed is almost not going to hold to be a good idea at the end. There's a reason the Berlin Wall was built. It was strictly to enforce the communist regime on people. If communism had been a great idea, Stalin would not have had to enforce it on these people. Let's learn from history and push this to the spotlight so everyone can be informed going forward. I'm asking this to be shelved and to use communication to let parents know what is happening, to have a voice and a vote on whether standard-based grading should be in our school. Again, all I'm asking is to pump the brakes, include our community. I love this community, and this is why I will continue to show up and fight for this. As my husband noted last night, we have a small football team of children at home who need me there, but I choose to continue to be here to fight for them and be their voice. Thank you for your time, and thank you for also all of our amazing teachers at our school.
David Corbin?
Hello. First, I would like to thank the board for being here and everything that you do, and also thank the community and everyone here tonight. Tonight is not an event I ever thought that I would ever have to do in my life, which is come to the school of my children, or come to the school where my wife teaches, to address the safety of our children. A lot of the topics were already discussed tonight, about bullying, about accountability, about responsibility. And that is something that, with policy, I've come to understand. The school board and the administration has policy set in place for the safety of our kids, which I do understand, where they cannot say or give us the details about the safety policies in the school. With that being said, it very lacks transparency with the events. My daughter sadly was threatened at the beginning of this month in the school, and sadly, I had to take the position of coming publicly when it seemed like the school administration did not take any immediate action on the threat of my child, the child of others, and the children in the school. Therefore, I think knowledge is power, and I think that is something that everyone should understand. So from the events that I've gathered on that day, I would like to share that with the board and also with the community and in the day's afterwards. So, on Monday, April 3rd, my daughter came to my home in tears, describing a threat where a student had made comments directed toward specific students in their classroom, her, and also the school. With that being said, the threat happened at approximately 2:10 during school hours, was corroborated by the end of school time with other students. There was no contact to the police by 6:00 PM from the school about a possible threat of a shooting within our community. At that time, I felt I had to have a responsibility, a responsibility for the safety of my children and the children of others, and also the faculty, administration, and everyone within this building. So, at 6:20, I did call the police, and I did ask for a response and an investigation about what was going on because there was a threat on my child's life. Still, no contact from the store at the school had been made to the parents or to the faculty. After hours of conversation with the police, unfortunately, I felt the need to go public, and I did make a post on social media. It was not to hinder what our school can do, it was not to curb it. But as I listened to your conversations about the pride, about the success of this school, about raising our young women and men to go out into the world, it is absolutely worth protecting and taking every actionable stance that we can because it is something that is so precious. Afterwards, the school did not respond until nine hours after the incident via email by almost midnight of that day. Following day, there was a discussion with Ms. Dunlinger, our superintendent, about discussions with the police and how we can go around policy and make it be used as a voice to further information to the community about what was going on. Unfortunately, no other information was given due to policy. With that being said, I have talked to the sheriff, I have talked to Madison County Sheriff's Office, and I'm gonna give a big thank you for them for showing up and protecting our kids when they needed it. With that being said, more information was given that two months prior to this incident, there was another one with also threats of two students' lives. And still, there was no call to the police. There was no call for action, investigation beyond the walls of one's decision. Excuse me. On April 5th, I did attend the emergency board meeting. With that being said, it was a closed board meeting. They could not give me more information. I did ask the school board to address an emergency school board meeting to voice our concerns, and unfortunately, that did not happen. The thing that I asked for tonight was I asked to review our policy. I asked to see where we can make transparency to our community and what steps we can do to be active in the safety of our children's lives, your lives, and the future, the future of our community and where we can go with child. Thank you for your time.
Krista Maxwell?
Hi. For seven years, I've had children in school. I've never once had come before the board with a concern, until now. There are so many reasons I have loved this school for my children, and mostly to do with a lot of the staff they've had in their lives over the years. A lot of the staff we have loved are now gone or leaving due to one person and the issues created by that person. The community has brought concern after concern to the superintendent, and those concerns have not been addressed. This has led to students not wanting to come to school, parents pulling students to homeschool them. The bully said our district was the one to come to versus others in our area to avoid bullying issues, and I can't say that now. The amount of parents that have brought bullying concerns to the superintendent and been ignored is just astonishing and sad. Sad that a child is so bullied, they don't want to come to school. Those children are crying out for help and being ignored. The bullying doesn't only pertain to the children, this is also extended onto the staff, to the point that the staff are terrified to speak out, fear of retaliation. This has been told to me by multiple current and former staff. This school has become a dictatorship, and if you're not in with Mrs. Dunlinger, then you're part of the problem, which must be removed. Those that are in with Mrs. Dunlinger, it made the school more like a prison than a school. To have my child come home and tell me they're being told things like, "You all need to do better," "You're reflecting poorly on the school," or "These kids are driving me nuts today," is not anything I should be hearing from my kids, having three in middle school and elementary. Is the board aware of all the changes we make within the school? If so, then you're not the board that we had hoped when we elected you. Multiple children are coming home stating that the boys are no longer allowed to go to the bathroom during class. Per Iowa State Code 216.9, unfair discriminatory practices, no one in this school should be keeping a student from going to the bathroom. Not only is it discriminatory, but it's not good for these kids. Let's discuss the threats. Is the board aware there have been multiple occasions where threats have happened where Mrs. Dunlinger swept them under the rug and made no parents aware nor the police? This has also been confirmed through multiple sources. People are speaking against her because they know what she's doing is wrong. April 3rd, 2023, an issue occurred in class that should have immediately been reported to the police and was not. In fact, it not only was not reported to the police, but parents and school staff found out on Facebook, as you heard earlier. And as you also heard, we weren't notified until 11:57 PM after a parent had made a Facebook post and Madison County made a post. Why am I not hearing from the superintendent? She's constantly stating that she wants to be transparent, that this community is not seeing transparency. We're seeing the complete opposite. We're seeing secret bubbles coming to the surface, until the incident that occurred around 2:30 and was not called in until 6:21 PM, as you heard earlier. You were elected to do what's in the community's best interest, but above all, what's in the best interest of our children. I can confidently state that if you choose not to listen to the community tonight, you are going to lose a lot more families than what you've lost already. There are a multitude of families ready to pull their kids, and we have asked those families to hold out in the hopes that the board would make the right decision. We are simply asking the board to listen and understand how bad this has gotten. Leadership starts at the top. If the majority of the staff don't trust her, how can the students? Why would the staff speak against her when she has the ability to get rid of them? When is the last time that so many in the community came together to ask a superintendent to be removed? Maybe that's a question that you should be asking. I urge you to listen to the community. There are times when an official simply does not match the community's values or priorities, and this is it. Changes need to happen, and we as the community will ensure changes happen starting in the interim. Please be the board who fights for its community and not the superintendent's agenda. Thank you.
Sarah Wagner?
Good evening. Well, a lot of what I was gonna say has been said, but I'll repeat it because it's worth repeating. Tonight, I first want to talk about the two things I believe are most important in this school district, and that's the students and staff. For the past few weeks, I've heard from current and former staff members who have felt degraded and unheard, who are afraid to speak out in fear of retaliation. No one should work in an environment like that, where their mental and physical health are not safe, nor should a child have to attend a school feeling that way. Employee morale is the direct reflection of how healthy a company's culture is, how well employees are supported, and how engaged employees are. Low employee morale is not a problem in itself. It is the direct result of a lack of effective communication, micromanaging, high-stress environments, and not responding properly when employees come to management with concerns. All of these things lead to a lack of trust and leadership. Employee morale can be the fuel that drives an organization forward, or it can be the fuel that feeds the fires of employee discontent. Employees don't lead businesses when they feel valued and appreciated. Low employee morale comes with a high price tag. We've lost numerous loyal, long-term, wonderful staff at I-35. Four more on tonight's agenda. We've also gained wonderful staff, and if things don't change, we run the risk of losing them as well. Our children are the ones who suffer the most from the loss of wonderful staff members. John Kennedy said, "Children are worlds was valuable resource and its best hope for the future." When there is a poor culture here at the school, is coming from the top, it will eventually trickle down to staff and students. If teachers and other staff are unhappy, how can you expect them to perform at the best for students? As a community, we have come to you with concerns in the past, and it is a recurring theme. I have heard in speaking with people from the community lately, why save something when the board doesn't care what we think? We have a complete loss of confidence. After this past incident of a complete lack of human communication, and then again, what if another threat was made and only the middle school parents were notified? It's time to make a change. We are one building. Shifting my focus to you. Actions speak louder than words, and I would say that the actions of the board are quite disturbing. You're blatant. Your blatant disregard for this community is appalling to me. I question the motives of the board at this point. Everything is coming off sneaky and convoluted. In regards to the emails I have sent to the board recently, the only response I have received upon serious issues was from your attorney, none of whom. Your attorney, who is clearly working in the best interests of the superintendent, was kind enough to point me through Iowa Code 279.24, which deals with administrative contracts. The code states, "The school board may, by a majority vote, cause the contract of an administrator to be terminated." But you already know that. You just did it a few weeks ago. You want us to respect you, but that respect must be earned. You have the power to terminate and terminate a school around, so what's stopping you? Was the special meeting you called at the beginning of the month your way of getting ahead of the petition before you even saw it? Whether or not you or your attorney believe our petition is valid, the community has spoken, and we will continue to speak. It seems as if the board has forgotten that you work for the community, not the superintendent. Per the Iowa Association of School Board's Guide for School Board Candidates, the school board represents the citizens of the community and overseeing the public school. As an entity legally charged with governing the school district, each school board is responsible to its community to govern effectively. Where is the accountability here? Do you not see how releasing a statement saying the board supports the superintendent before you even heard from us is just ridiculous? I don't know much about the new candidate for principal, but I think we maybe need to slow down a little bit. It seems very fast. A lot of times, the right thing to do and the hard thing to do are one and the same, so what you allow will continue. We as the community will continue to do the hard thing, even if you choose not to. Maybe we should review the statements from the board member code of ethics you agreed to follow when you were elected and ask yourself if you're a holding house. You haven't given me a reason to think you are. And finally, what are we as parents, if not advocates for our children? What are you as board members, if not advocates for the community? If you will not listen to your constituents and do what's best for the school, maybe it's time to rethink your position on the board. Either way, hope everyone's covered.
All right, thank you, everybody. Next item on the agenda is education action, celebrating the class of 2023.
So I missed it. This is always the time of year when our seniors are getting excited about next and all, I think nervous and, you know, all those things that kind of war against each other in that, in that setting. So, in class of 2023, we'll have backglow it this year, hosted here on Wednesday night. And then we start with our senior signing breakfast, and that's, families are welcome to attend. We do that on May 12th. That's a celebration of where kids are going to school. Some are going into the military, some are going into work. Some are going into the military, some are going into work, some are going into apprenticeships or college. And so we just recognize wherever they go next in life, the accomplishments they made here and the support for them for next. We, we see amazing things at Fine Arts Night. We have our band and choir performing. We also have the visual arts, ceramics and drawing and all of those on display from our kids that have worked for some four years. So that's always a fantastic event. We have a awards night on the 17th. Practice on the 19th for graduation, which I think is always a little bit bittersweet because I think it starts to really sink in, and then graduation is on the 21st. As a school, our number one responsibility is to prepare kids for next and give them opportunities to be the best that they can be, so this is a celebration of that. I can't think of a better positive acknowledgement for our district, so.
Do I have a question? The interesting thing is we all have seniors, and so if we go to a certain place, do we post an agenda or anything to be above like the law? Or is that, I mean, that might be silly, but I, I want to make sure.
Yeah, we can put it on the cell.
Okay. Is it just if we have discussions because we have to put it on the cell? Six events with the prom or open numbers?
Right, it's, it's the, when, when they talk about these events, in the past, experiences I've had is as long as you're not sitting with each other discussing board issues, then you can be at, at events. And as, as a parent, that's, that's your role. We expect, we encourage, we, we want that. So as long as you're not discussing board actions and things like that, and you're in an event as a parent, you're, you have that built, so.
All right, student reporter Ross, you're up.
So some current events and highlights from the past month. Students are, are excited to welcome Mr. Backle to the Roadrunner family. Students are excited that the Iowa assessments are over and got those completed. The NHS held a blood drive last Wednesday, April 19th, and it was very successful. And they would like to thank you, to the community and staff and all the students that helped support them. Prom was very successful last Saturday, and after prom was too. Many prizes were given out such as TVs, gaming consoles, even gift cards. The Black Warrior will be held Wednesday, April 26th, and many seniors are excited. Some positives with sports is both track teams have won previous meets the past two weeks. Our boys' golf team has several participating this year and will be able to host two meets, which is very encouraging and successful. The FFA State Convention was held on April 17th and 18th. The chapter had 14 students participate in several contests. And a highlight from that is the Ag sales ranked 16th out of 37 teams and received a gold ranking. The chapter also visited the greenhouse at Iowa State, learned about many leadership skills and formular safety, as well as firearm safety and many other important skills. We explored many colleges and jobs in the ag industry, such as working on farm equipment, ag sales and ag business. Lastly, there is, along with the state convention, there's an FFA Fun Night. And this was a dance that held games for many members of chapters. And we got to interact with each other, a lot of people all over the state of Iowa. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ross. I appreciate that. Do you have that report written now? Is it something you could provide to, to, to?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. There's no other questions. Thank you, Ross. Administrator reports, Ms. Whitson.
Good evening. Thank you, and I guess one of the things that we have been working on is culture in the middle school. And as you can see, the staff as well as the administration came together as a team, put some new expectations into a plan and began working this plan on 4/11. I have given you some data there about the referrals. Out of 133 referrals, there were, yes, out of 33 referrals, there were seven major, few referrals with 95% of our referrals being minor. And then, as you could see, there were different forms that we put together and we continue to grow. And also, please note that our referrals are going down and that we keep working together, students and staff alike. The staff is also looking at summer school for middle school. They did not have that last summer. Currently, we have nine students from first semester in our core classes that we would like to support. And then looking at second semester, there will be a few more, so we're putting that together as well. As you all know, we completed the Conditions of Learning Survey, which is about our school's safety and the environment that our students and staff work in every day. The last couple of things that I'd like to talk about with the great success, thank you to Maggie Weller and the eighth grade team for partnering with the Truro community to do a cleanup. The students and staff alike did a great job. You can see some pictures on Facebook. But what a great learning experience for all of our students. And hopefully we can grow that in the years to come to New Virginia and St. Charles. There are a lot of really cool events coming up with our fifth grade Wax Iowa, famous Iowa Wax Museum and our sixth grade, I can't think right now, sorry, sixth grade science fair and our concerts, and everyone's just working every day. We'll be having fast bridge testing here at the end of the year to see where we're at on our fluency goals.
All right, one quick question on the accountability expectations.
Yes.
April of the school year is an interesting time to be bringing those out and reinforcing them. Is there something, like, what led to that timing? What led to the emphasis on that in your employee?
Yep. I will tell you there was an uptick, uptick in behaviors. And so together, we decided, hey, let's put together a plan. Let's have every classroom and teacher follow those plans. Let's talk to the students. Here's our expectations. I know that it has been mentioned that students don't have permission to go to the restroom, but that is not the case. They can have call and escort or we're in the hallway so that students can use the restroom. But I think it's to say, hey, we're in this together. We want our students to rise to the top with their behaviors, so their academics will be at the top too.
I know mental health was, oh, sorry. That was something that was mentioned earlier. Can you speak a little bit about how that ties into the behavior and what kind of resources we're using?
All year, we have been using socio-emotional learning in our weekly Roadrunner pride time. As you know, we have pride expectations. And SEL has been a lesson that every week our students receive. Depending on what the lesson in is, it could be a large group lesson, it could be a small group lesson, it could be a lesson around individuals. But this hasn't been something new this year. The district has been operating on socio-emotional learning, skill development for more than this year, this year. But it's important. We, we all know that mental health is facing us. What we do to build community is to have good discipline, and you have to have support. We have to care about our kids, but we all need to know that we're on the same playing field. And it's a partnership, and not everybody always agrees with what the rules are, just like our phones. Remember back when we took the phones and we said, hey, put them with your teacher, advisory teacher, put them in the office, leave them at home, or put them in your locker? The kids were amazing. Talk about socio-emotional. The anxiety level just in every day and the communication in our students is just more positive. We have seen an uptick in some students sneaking their phones again. They're in the bathroom. If it doesn't raise a flag, I don't know what does. We are here to protect our students to the best of our abilities. And, you know, I, I realize parents want their students to have a phone, but sometimes at the middle school level, our students aren't making good decisions with those phones. And we also need to know, where's our focus? We have 44 minutes of class, and when you're telling kids, "Put your phones away, stop texting this person, stop bullying this other person, stop sending nude pictures to others." Is that not our job is to protect our kids and the safety every day? And that we want environments that are healthy, and together, that's what we're working on. Thank you.
Like numbers from before you, you know, like earlier in the school year, before all this was implemented, to compare this current data to for the expectations?
I can get that for you, but I can tell you that my job this year has been dealing day after day after day after day with discipline. It's hard to get into our classrooms when your only job is to try to put out fires that are not up to you. I can get that for you.
I'm just interested to see, you know, how, how much has gone down?
Yep.
Because, you know, just over those couple of days, you can see a steady increase.
Right, and I would say some of those targets probably weren't like the minors. Teachers weren't putting in all the minors, but I can for sure give you the majors. But yes, this whole year has been stressful in the sense of discipline and students doing what they need to be doing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mrs. Woods.
Hi, everybody. Just give a couple of quick highlights. Conditions for learning survey, we just turned down to makeup tests, so, our makeup surveys, so we'll get those wrapped up. One thing my staff feels really important about is our core values. We're having a lot of discussion about those at the district level, but specifically in elementary. The grades I put in there, the whole phrase is what they are currently at the elementary level. And then what I folded is me trying to show you what they are thinking about adjusting those to, to make those more memorable. Looking at math specifically, that's a little lower down. We are looking at that departmentalized structure in 2, 3, 4, meaning one teacher in each grade would teach that math subject. And exploring what that curriculum looks like, looking at alignment. And for me, it's just kind of exciting to see the teachers. Even today, I had a conversation with someone who was a little worried. I said he, but it kind of gives it away. He was at a point where it was like, I'm so excited for this. This is going to be an opportunity for me to hone in and be really great at one thing and provide kids what I feel is best. And so lots of positives there. Me and I did want to let you know that the SRG team has spent time on that webpage, as we discussed last time. It still is in rough draft form, missing some images, et cetera. But we'll get that hopefully wrapped up this week so that that's up to date and has lots of information on there for families to access. Any questions, concerns, or thoughts for anything on the elementary end?
For SRG website?
Sorry, webpage.
Yeah, is there a link to it?
It's on our, so there was a, I want to say it was called like, I think it was called District Grading Policies before, but it only covered high school, specifically grading. So she just took that page and made it actually a district grading page. It's still in rough draft form, so it literally says the image to your right, and there's no image there yet. So just know, we know, we're almost there, so. Any other questions or thoughts?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Weber.
My number one goal is to speak the least, so. I, I highlighted our professional development here that we did. I reported out March and then added here April that we were kind of releasing that two-year plan for professional development across this district, including culture and cultural learning to the building principals. We had gotten the staff where I would need it to as a whole. Like each building is definitely in a different place on what they need and what they want as a staff and then as assistants work inside of those buildings. So we released those over to administrators to start working on this past month, which they kind of did their own spin on where they were at and started the lead frog. And we're going to come back this fall all together, so it's been a long time in April going through that. I added some reminders on here about some new things, some fun things that happened here when it comes to activities. We kind of unleashed the new company partnerships for activities. I've been lucky that my, my wife is heavy into corporate design and sports marketing, so she's been able to kind of really run with that and work with the Booster Club along with doing all that. There were kind of new companies to try and make our activities more of an event. So a few of the companies that have already joined are going to be getting, you know, in-game shout-outs, free giveaways, brought to buy. They're gonna have their posters in both softball and baseball now. We'll have them on the inside in the gym. We're kind of relooking at the screen that I think was purchased a long time ago that doesn't work because it's not very high-tech. We've been refiguring how I can use that for these companies. And then what we can do to, to get, we have so many awesome companies in the district. I think the list was like 29 that you started calling, and I never really knew a lot existed that are all families here. So hopefully we get their name out there, do some of that partnership. So Roadrunner, or the Booster Club and Teresa are working hard on that. And then the Roadrunner Club also on there, I think we got three more joined here in the last two days and they've come down the last couple of weeks. So I know we're over almost 20 to 25 names on that wall, so I'm pretty excited for that throughout this summer. And, and then a reminder for, I believe, the sixth month in a row, that May 22nd is a Booster Club meeting, but we have Roadrunner Night in the ballpark. I think it's gonna be awesome. Coach Douglas is gonna be there with his family to get his holiday recognition. I just think it's gonna be a really, a really fun night there, so I'd love to see all of you there. And you guys can do it on your phones while you're there and talk about stuff, so. Lastly, because I know that she sometimes doesn't like to tutor on more, you know, those numbers Ms. Whitson was putting up there, did you break that down into three-day increments on those first nine days of that program? And it was a heavy lift between all the teachers and students and everyone involved. That's a 63% drop in nine days. That's massive. So when you do, when you actually put the numbers to paper, the fact that we're seeing now, you know, seven to 10 total referrals in the entire middle school, you're seeing up near 40 at the start, just, just an awesome amount of that entire team. So I just want to make sure I should cover that. So, questions?
And this is called for you or Mrs. Whitson, or the combination. Is there anything that the board could do policy-wise to help support that effort? Is there anything that, policy-wise, that is answering you or stopping you from doing anything that really feels important?
I don't know if I could name, so, so I'll tell you that I think for years, there was policies aimed at the 512, a whole picture. And like I was just talking about, how I believe we have the staff which building something different when it comes to culture and to the board. That's a large spread of grades on what's actually needed in there. And so with Ms. Whitson coming on board this year and giving it a different look, she's been able to hone in on what middle school grades need in order to be successful. And I know that in my meetings with teachers over the last month, we started talking about and do the things they're doing there, but what else can we do as a high school? So I've got a pretty sub-large list going on what needs to happen between now and August at the high school level that we need to start talking about. So I can't honestly say that there's something you need to do or we're enhancing on something, but I do think it needs to be more identified on the administrative side to then put it in front and say, is this something that we can put in handbook that we can plan on going forward because we know the possibilities are there?
Any other questions for Mr. Weber?
Thank you very much.
Chipper Tannen report.
I have just a few things. Today I had the privilege of taking two of our students to the Iowa Youth Institute. And I'm not sure if you're all familiar with that, but it's actually organized by the World Food Prize. So our students look at a country and a global issue, typically dealing with some kind of agricultural event, but it can be really anything. It can be healthcare, it can be access to clean water, it can be reusable plastics, it can be any number of, what we say are global issues. And so the students are responsible for researching that, coming up with possible solutions, and then drafting a five, three to five-page paper that then goes to the Iowa Youth Institute. 250 students were selected to come this year. We did have five that were selected and two could attend, so we went today. And I think the most amazing thing about the day, other than just hearing the excitement of our kids, was we were in a session, and I'll use Emma Lee as our example, because I got to sit with her as she talked to the panel about her problem and her solutions. And there were experts from the Des Moines, or I'm sorry, the Iowa Food Bank. There was a professor from Iowa State there, and there was also a gentleman who oversees a nonprofit in Africa. And so they were the expert panel that taught to the students. So the students go in, they present in about three minutes their country, the problems that it's facing, and then their solutions. And then they get to ask, the panel asks questions. And so our students went, and I was with Emma for this, and I think the very best part of the whole thing was when the gentleman from the nonprofit looked at Emma and said, I've never considered the idea, I'm going to take it and put it into action in Africa. And what her idea was, is with gender roles, and she studied South Sudan, and in gender roles in South Sudan, it didn't allow for women to get high education. And they were responsible for budgeting, for food, for all of the things to take care of the family. And so when she came up with her solutions, she was talking about childcare, so women could still have the kids taken care of, but then they could still get education. And one of her ideas was to have a traveling tutor that went to different villages and would support the learning. And he said, we have a traveling nurse who does healthcare, of course it makes sense that we would have a traveling tutor that could do education. So he was just, I mean, and to see her, I mean, it just was, it was truly what education is all about. So, and then to hear them on the way back, you know, chatting about how like her, her life now is thinking beyond just what she thought about when we left at 7:30 this morning. And I just thought that was remarkable. So it was a fantastic day. Sue Magers usually does this with kids. I think Eddie, your son, did this, participated in this one year. But it was, it was truly eye-opening for those kids, and it was just remarkable. So that's how I got to spend my day today, which was phenomenal. The other, any questions about that before I? I think it's about eighth grades through high school. The two that went, so Carla Schumacher was the other student that went, they both got a $1,000 scholarship to Iowa State. And they can actually be considered to go to the Global Food Prize, which is in Des Moines, and they can be eligible for a $10,000 scholarship. So it was based on how they interact with the panel, what their next steps are. And so just a, just a remarkable experience.
Yeah, Sam did it, and he had a fantastic experience. It was such a great, just a great program. And so thank you to Sue, thank you to you for taking these kids and doing that. I mean, I think it says something, five out of 250, you know, true, right? That's pretty impressive. I mean, it's only 2%, right? But there's a lot of kids in the state of Iowa.
And it's up to all the high school kids and the dad.
Yeah, no, I get it, and that's really cool. So a great program, and I would, I would echo, you know, participation, encourage it, whatever. Because Sue, when Sam, so when Sam signed up, he didn't really, Sue kind of said, hey, would you do this? And Sam was like, no, I'm not sure. But after he got through it, we, I read more about his ambient than I've ever known. He loved it. It was a great experience, so it's great.
Okay, two more things on the list. The one about communication, I just listed some of the things that we've done there. I think there's a lot of questions about who do we communicate with and what. We have primary sources of communication, and we have what we probably consider secondary sources. So primary sources would be our website and to some extent our social media, because we post news clippings on there with updates of what's happening. And those are, those are for information only. I've had some questions about why aren't the comments on for the social media? It's not meant to be a debate platform for the school, it's meant to send information out. And we're encouraging families to come in and talk to whomever their questions apply to. So if it's a teacher, they come to visit with the teacher, or if it's an administrator, they come to visit with the administrator. And if those things aren't resolving your issues, we ask that they schedule a time and come see me. I met with Ms. Keller, and one of the things she suggested was creating a way to access the calendar so that they can see when time's available for me. So that's now on, available to families if they want to come and schedule a time to visit with me. We've also, I'd say maybe a year ago, maybe 18 months ago, we started publishing in The Tri Corner, which is a monthly publication that I'm told goes to every I-35 family. 2,600 copies that go out. And we, we use two pages of that, and that's really just kind of highlighting what our kids are doing, but it also gives updates on activities and events. We try and have at least a month out of all the things that are going on in the school. So that's available there. We did start the district scoop, so I know that a lot of the schools had newsletters, and one of the concerns was, like, I hear about it in the elementary, but I didn't know about it in the middle school. So we're trying to figure out how to convey that same information at a district level. So we started what's called the district scoops, and maybe have that information shared more readily between schools or between buildings. And then we have kind of questions that have been coming up from the community about like the hiring process. I think there was a question, you know, Mr. Weber knew two of the candidates that were being hired, and so what is his role in that process? Well, one of the things that we try and do is look at, look at who are these candidates going to be working with, and is this person on the hiring team going to be a conflict? And if they are, then we remove them from the hiring team. So Mr. Weber didn't serve on the hiring team for our principal because he knew two of the candidates. So that's just some of that information that maybe seems obvious, but maybe isn't clear. We're trying to send that information out with the questions that we get. So we had questions, topics that we have for that are things like, how will the SRO work? What will that look like? What will their responsibilities be? So depending on the action that the board does, we have a couple of different directions we can go with that. The new legislative updates that Mr. Gibson talked about, I'm going to talk about it here in just a minute. But there's, there's a lot of detail in that that I think really needs to be communicated with public so that they understand maybe why, but also what it means for us here every day. And so that'll be some of those, I would say, informed pieces. So hopefully we give people more information about the questions that they have. We also are going to have parent nights. We're going to start our first one on May 10th. And the focus of that is how do we help kids maybe not have summer slide? Like what can parents and kids do to keep kind of that academic focus? Maybe it's a reading challenge in the family, or some strategies for how to help students improve their fluency rates, or any, any number of things. But also on that, we're going to, we're going to tag on all of our parent nights, the opportunity to visit with administrators about any topic. I know that sometimes during the day, it's hard for parents to take off work and come. So the administrative team will be available on those parent nights for a roundtable. If they want to have a one-on-one discussion, we can do it during that time. So it's again, an attempt to try and get more communication out in a way that's conducive not only for the learning that we're trying to do, but also be responsive to the questions we've had from the community. So those are the, kind of an overview of what we do with our communication currently. Any questions? We have a couple of new things out there, so.
I just got one quick item. I had a couple of people tell me, you know, they'll use social media, and so much of our communication comes through social media. I think it's important to remind people that the, our website has a live feed in every post that hits social media, it's our website too. So even if you aren't on Twitter, Facebook, whatever, I think they miss sharing, right? All of those are different.
Yes.
It's still hitting our website, so you don't have to be social media savvy to be able to get that information.
Correct.
So it was helpful to a couple of people, so I think it would be helpful.
Okay.
Does that also hit the app?
Yes.
If you have the app on your mind.
Yes. And you haven't downloaded the app, that's a great tool to get one stuff for all of the things, calendars and that information, so. And the last piece, any other questions about the communication piece? The last piece is this idea of, or two pieces of legislation that have been passed by the co-houses, and I just put a few highlights. This is by no means all of the information. The first one that came out was sent in file 391, and this is about flexibility for schools. I think one of the priorities of this current legislative group is to give local control back to schools, give it to parents, and really kind of make it something in the community. And so the highlights for this, we had to complete an extensive comprehensive school improvement plan every year to kind of solidify what we were doing. Much of that is what we talk about at the board table. So I think the idea is, is that's where it should be, is at the board table. So if you think about our strategic plan, if you think about our setting of goals, all of those things are in that, and really it should be at this level, and that's one of the things that came out of this. It allows flexibility for the teacher librarian and the counselor. It allows for five virtual snow days, increases the number of offer and teach classes, so we can actually have more course offerings for our kids here, which is really beneficial. Removes the technology literacy from the 21st century skills. It removes the requirement to teach kindergartners about the role of family, sense of self, perception of others. It removes any references to AIDS throughout the curriculum. It does add career exploration, a more detailed career exploration. It requires two units of foreign language and two units of fine arts, so that's actually less than what our students take. Creates a path that will excuse students from PE requirements, and there are several things listed there as to why a student may be excused from PE requirements. And it could be because they're in an activity that shows that they have the equivalent number of minutes and they want to take another class. So there are just some things in that that are cleaned up. And then it removes the requirement for financial literacy, but the standards still need to be taught. And so it's just kind of a hodgepodge almost of a variety of different topics. But one of the things that I want to do is kind of break this down and talk about it in some of those informed pieces, because a lot of them go into more detail. Like what does that add to career exploration? How does that fit in with what we already do? How does that become a part of what our work-based learning is? So I want to, I want to include more detail on those, but I just wanted you to be aware that it is pretty comprehensive, and it's allowing flexibility. The other piece, and this is the one that Mr. Gibson referred to.
Before you even go on that, before you even go on that one.
Yeah, sure.
I was kind of surprised in this legislation, most of it really makes sense. It changes to the financial literacy side of it not being, you're still up to teaching, you still have to be a standard, but it doesn't have to be as specifying as what it is.
It doesn't have to be a class.
I'm concerned about that. I think, I think we should consider continuing to offer that as a, I think that's a skill that's necessary, too often not taught.
Right. And I think that's, that's really what it's about, right? As a board, I agree. I think financial literacy literacy is very important. And if we have a class that's designed to help kids understand what a loan is, and understand what credit is, and understand all of those things before they leave school, that's tremendous. And so this says we don't have to teach it. If it's still a value that we have here, then we can still teach it. You as a board can decide that you still want that to be a priority, we just aren't required to do it.
Can we still make it a requirement for graduation?
Yes. Yes, the board sets the policy for what classes are required. Now, some have to be there for code. But this no longer has to be there for code, but you can still leave it.
Okay.
Yep. The other, I'm sorry, the other questions about that flexibility one? Okay, the other one is 496, and this is the transparency in parents' rights. And this, sorry, I'm not sure why it's, this allows for the education of the students, and ultimately it's reinforcing that parents have the choice of what their kids are doing. So when we think about school, and we think about access to materials, one of the things that we do is if there is a book coming up, and let's say in English class, we send a note home saying, this will be the book that's being used, do you want your child to participate? And so that's, that's kind of spelled out in more detail than this, right? Like how can a student be opted out? I think our teacher should just send the note home, but this is a process that just is spelled out on the, on the website. So the things that this does, some of it I think cleans up any ambiguity, but some of it also is very direct, I think, in response to parent concerns. So it prohibits any kind of program, curriculum test, survey questionnaire about gender identity or sexual orientation. And it does require age-appropriate materials. You're going to see that a lot in here, that things are age-appropriate. Removes the requirement to teach HIV and HPV vaccine from K-12 Health. The K-12 library program will be consistent age curriculum with age-appropriate materials. And there's a lot more details about that one. I think as we, you know, I think about being responsive to community, and last year, one of the things that I think came out of the discussion, and I'll refer to Mr. Gibson because we worked on, how do we make sure that parents who want maybe a little bit more say in how their kids check books out, how does that happen? And so we worked and came up with a process by which if your student is checking out a book in our library, you get a notification if you signed up for it, right? It was on the registration. And then when you sign up for it, you can say, yeah, my kid, you know, you can Google the book, you can see what it's about, you can say, yeah, I want my students to have access to that or no. So in our way, without even the legislation, we were responsive to those parent concerns and had a process in place for parents to have that active engagement in their, in the library checkout process. So I think that this, this is good, but I think our approach, again, was based on what our community wanted. So that to me, this solidifies some of that, but I think we were kind of on the right track before this. This is a, this is one that I think is a little challenging. Prohibit schools from a formal examination or survey of students designed to assess the students' mental, emotional, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't say, or physical health that is not required by state and federal law. I think that we have to have a lot more clarification on what that means, especially with as much concern as we have for things like mental health and social health. We just need a little bit more clarification on what that really means, because I would hate for our teachers to be asking kids how they're doing and that be a problem. I don't think it will be, but I think we need to have some very clear guidance on what they, what they mean by that.
Who helps understand what the guidance is? Is it the Bureau of Education?
The Department of Education. They actually, they have a lawyer that works and interprets the law and then puts it into code.
Okay, so you don't have to wait for the court's dissent precedent or anything silly like that, just?
Right, right.
You need feedback, you know the person's name, you just call?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any kind of survey we give, we need to give seven days notice. I think we typically do that. The only surveys I think we give are state mandated, and that's part of this. You just can't give kids surveys. I think there were some concerns about surveys in the past in different districts that were asked students things that maybe weren't specific to education. And so I think this is a cleanup of that. The publication to the website, so Mrs. Wells and I have already started working on this. The process of procedures to request a book, curriculum, material. The process of procedures to request a book, curriculum materials removed from the library, a process about how petition the board and access decisions made by the board, details on how parents can view curriculum, including the process to opt students out, and a comprehensive list of books. We have all of those in our board policy, they're, they're probably just not easily accessible, so we're talking about revamping, and I think Mrs. Wells has started revamping our parent page, so that those are just right there. So, if you have a question about any of those things, there will be a link right there, where there will be access to that on the page. The other thing that's kind of a big.
Sharon, quick question.
Yeah, sorry.
Do we survey the athletes at the end of the season? I was thinking that we did.
Yeah, and I think that's more about, like, where do you want to see this program going, and what do you, yeah. I don't know if that falls into this, but that's why we want a little bit more guidance. Because that's about how do we make our programs better, so I don't, I just, we just want to make sure. Allows students in CPI, which is competent private instruction, to receive special education services from the district without ADA approval. This is a little different, and not, not typical, but I think it could allow parents who do want to have either private instruction, homeschooling, or maybe a school that's not accredited, their students can still get services. And so, this, this will be a little different as it rolls out, but that was, again, part of this comprehensive plan. I will tell you that I think this plan started at 38 pages, and they got it down to 18. So, it's, it's still pretty comprehensive. So, some of it we need more guidance on to put in, to put in play, but the idea is making sure that parents know what they have access to, what they can, you know, get requests about, and then how do we support that process? So, those are two pretty significant pieces of legislation that we currently have.
Can I ask a question on that?
Of course.
Is that going to, with the special education department now, is that going to add us, a lot of students to do anything to it?
It could possibly. And part of that is, even with special education students that we have now, if we have a student that we don't have a program that we can serve, then our, our goal is to try and get them into a program that meets their needs. And so, there are some students who maybe, let's say, are very high-level behavior risk. They might not still attend school here, they might go to, like Woodward Granger has a day school for specific skills to help kids with behavior challenges. And so, if we don't provide the services here, our goal is to get them as close as possible, we provide transportation, but to get them in the program that they need. So this, I think the challenge is going to be, where will the services be provided? Are we going to have to send somebody out into the home? What does that look like? Or do we have to meet in a neutral site? How much, how much time for travel? You know, because with HEP or, or plan for a student with special needs, they have so many minutes that they're required to work on those goals. And so, just depending on the number, it might be hiring another staff member, it might be hiring two, but we also have special education dollars to help support them. So, I, I put it on there because it's so, so, just a little different, but it could have a big impact on that program as far as costing. And there are several other things in this bill as well, but those are, those are the highlights.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? All right, that brings us to our consent agenda items, these do require a motion in a second for us to approve. We all have received the past meeting minutes, the monthly bills, and financial statements, and adequate ones were left on the table for us tonight, open enrollment, and then renewal of the IGRP 2023, 2024 contract. Can you explain that a little bit for us, so everybody understands what that is here?
Yeah, that's, um, this is the.
LGRP.
Yeah, the LGRP, I'm assuming to verify that.
All true.
Let me, let me, I'll have Ted explain why I pulled up, because it's, it's wanting to be a little bit of a difference now, so hold on one second.
This is a renewal of a program that we're currently in the, we enrolled January 1st through June 30th, and this is a renewal to continue that service. It allows us to pay for it out of the management funds, it saves general fund dollars, it also ensures the amount that we're going to pay for that year.
So we, we can budget it, right? So this is the group for natural gas?
Correct.
Right.
Right.
And that, you remember a couple of months ago, it was for the remainder of the year, and now this is for all of next year. So it was the remainder of this year that we signed that contract for, and then this is going forward for the next year. So here's the local government risk pool on that, the information.
Does this cover both of our, the bus barn and the school? Does it cover the bus barn?
The bus barn is heated with propane.
It's what?
It's propane.
Oh, okay.
So this is just natural gas. It does include the CTE building and the cream house.
Okay, so the CTE is here separately?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I can give some little bit of feedback on the risk pool and what it is. It's a coagulation of schools that have kind of pooled resources to keep costs down. We have 22 districts participating, 100% of those districts are back for the next year. This is part of, you know, kind of trying to allocate funds to help better position districts for management, and so, because we're able to use managed fund, we can take that out of the general fund, and we know exactly how much it is, so it's just an all-around sound process. Would you pay for the program? I mean, it does cost, but when you think about the other side of that, we think the benefit is worth it.
It's an insurance policy of sorts to protect, fix the budget spikes, financial spikes, natural gas, which commodities have been volatile than ever, so.
All right, resignations, reassignments, and contracts, I'll go ahead and read through those. Lori Howe hired as a family consumer science teacher pending approval of licensure. Adam Beckel hired as secondary principal. Amy Myers hired as middle school cross-country coach. Kelsey Daniels hired as high school assistant volleyball coach. Molly Bloom hired as secondary interventionist. Brooke Miller hired as high school math teacher. Margaret Llewellyn resigns from all positions. Tim McKinney resigns from assistant volleyball coach and head boys track coach. Brooke Lake resigns from the second grade teaching position. Michelle Wheeler resigns from computer science position. Whitney Ziegus hires to teacher leadership coaching position. Maddie Olson moves to preschool teacher, and Jenny Dickinson moves to tag teacher coordinator position. Are there any questions?
Brooke Miller was on the list for hires for the class. Is there a reason that she thought it was?
She has to do twice as much work. No, I think it's just a oversight.
Sort of, what's the question?
Oh, good. It was an oversight.
Quick question on Lori Howe, can you explain pending approved licensure?
Yeah, so, one of the things that we're seeing is an increase of people who maybe are considering education or had a role in education, but don't have the proper endorsement. And so, what happens with that is, a, so in this case, a teacher who has a license that doesn't have family consumer science, has to, has to take classes in order to be able to teach family consumer science. And so, they can get a conditional license if they're in a program working toward that degree. So they have an audit of their transcripts from the colleges, and then they work. So in this case, Iowa State's the only one that has a family consumer science program, so she sent it to Iowa, her transcript to Iowa State. They did an audit because she had taken several classes in her undergraduate that won't count, and so they tell her what classes she needs to take. She takes that information, sends it to the Board of Educational Examiners, and they can issue her conditional license. So she has done all of those steps, she's just waiting for that license. She cannot teach here unless she has the license to do so.
A conditional license she.
Correct, correct.
Is there, is there a period of time she can teach under the conditional?
Yeah, they get two years, but then they can also renew it for two years. So they have four years to be done with their coursework.
How long do we, until we find out if that condition?
So when I, I visited with her, or I had an email exchange with her maybe two weeks ago, Mr. Weber, has she been in touch with you since then? Right, so she's just waiting on, because she's already sent the application in with the Board of Educational Examiners, so we're just waiting on that verification. So I would say within the next three or four weeks. And if it doesn't come in, in that time, then we'll have to post the position again and hopefully get the candidate, but we don't, and that's just such a hard to fill position.
All right, are there any other, oh, go ahead, honey.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna ask, I think it might be beneficial for everyone to know kind of the hiring process, what we do, how you form committees, that kind of thing. If you don't mind, or is that too much though, when you hear?
No, I, no, I'm fine with that. And I'll use the, and Mr. Beckel is here, you want to come up, Mr. Beckel? Because they probably have questions that I can answer about you, so you can introduce yourself. But when we, I'll use Mr. Beckel's position as an example. We have two groups that will work through that process, but it starts with, we get all the applications, we do phone screenings for about seven or eight individuals, and narrow it down to three, what we would say are viable candidates, sometimes four, that we want to bring in to the district. When they come in, they meet with a team of teachers, associates, support staff, and a couple of parents. And I did have a question about the parents. I typically ask administrators, who would be a good fit? We look for things like teachers that are certain parents that are maybe relatively new to the district, parents that have been here for a while, parents that have kids that are very involved, parents that don't have kids involved, and we try and get a balance of different activities, maybe one from FFA, another one that's heavily involved in sports, maybe one that, that works, is going into kind of a trades program. And so, the idea is to try and get as many boxes checked of what their associations are in the school, and we ask them to serve on the committee. So, the other thing we always consider is, we have several, especially at the high school level, middle school level, we have several parents that are teachers, and so they bring that lens to every conversation I think they have. So those two, our that group means, they ask our candidates questions, and then they send to the administrative team the list of strengths that they see in the candidate, and either areas of concerns or questions that they still have. And so, once we get that information, or we then interview before we get that information, and we, this year I tried something new, I told all the candidates that were trying to experiment, and I put them in a situation where they were asked to work with the team. So Mrs. Woods and Ms. Whitson were part of the team, and they were given a scenario and they had to work through how they would respond to it. So that was part of the interview process this year that was a little different, and Mr. Beckel, can you tell anybody what he thought of that? But, so then we go through our part of it, and then Mr., in this case, Mr. Weber, because he wasn't sitting in on the interview teams, he took the candidates on a tour, just to answer questions, showed them the campus, and so, that, that was this process. From that, so in this instance, when Mr. Beckel's feedback came to us as the administrative team about questions that they still had, I said, "Well, let's just see if Mr. Beckel can be on a conference call, a show call." So we set up for the next night, and the committee was able to ask all the questions that they, that they had listed. And so, I think after that process, it was, it was an understanding that he was the first candidate with that group, and so there might have been some nerves, and just a little bit of the timing, and so we wanted to give him a fair opportunity to answer those questions. So, he graciously joined us the next night, and I think alleviated a lot of the concerns that the committee had by those questions. And so, I know some of them have still been in the public, and so I'm sure Mr. Beckel did get to talk to everybody tonight, so I guess if you have questions, do you mind answering a few now? If there are still things that are.
If that's a question.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay, so.
So one more question on the process, I guess. So, once, once that, the concern, you had that last call of concerns.
Correct.
Where's the final decision line?
So I think the final decision, we, so we met, as the administrative team, we met on Sunday, checked references, did all of the work around that, and then I think it comes down to, who do we think is going to be a good fit? Who do I think is going to be a good fit moving the district forward? Who do I think values the same things as the community values? Who do I think is going to be a good fit with our kids? All of those things that we know, because the high school is, is such a large piece of who we are, and then we make, then I make the recommendation, or I offer the position to the person. Every position that I offer is pending board approval, from teachers to support staff to administrators. But I think the process that we use in due diligence, and in checking references, and asking very direct questions, and having follow-up with Mr. Beckel, I think all of those things just solidifying whether or not, in this case, Mr. Beckel was our candidate would be a good fit. And so, I offer the position, because if he's not going to accept, I don't bring him to the board. And then we introduce the candidate pending board approval, just like done in the past. And then, we, last year, we had our candidate come in, our candidates come in before the board meeting as well, and ask, ask questions, kind of get to know them. And so, ultimately, I would say I'm the one who decides. We get a lot of input, I get input from the teachers and from the administrative team.
So, the announcement of the choice pending board approval, is that, is that something that just happened this time or the last couple of times, or is that, is that something that we will continually see?
Yeah, we'll continue to see that. I think the, there was a lot of, I think, kind of answered questions with Mr. Beckel in the community, so we wanted to make sure that some of those questions were addressed. So I think that was an attempt to be a little bit proactive, but as soon as the board agenda goes out, you see who the candidate is. You know, so we thought, you know, to, to kind of do it right, and give this person a great start toward the district here in a reception, just to get people to know who he is, and kind of what his philosophies are, and what his values are, and why he would be a good fit here. So, we have introduced the principal candidates before in the past, when they accept the position, but it's always dependent on board approval, so.
Just one more quick. Sorry. Okay. Just one more quick thing. I think that we do have a lot of parents that would be willing to sit, who would like to sit on the committee. Hopefully, we don't have to go through this too often.
Right.
But I do think that there is a lot of parents that would have interest in sitting on the committee, so I think that it would be good to distinguish between a teacher, a parent, a community member, and so forth.
Right, yeah.
Maybe make suggestions, because we have another candidate brought in. How do you take that feedback?
I think it depends. So if somebody says, you know, if, if the, if the support staff and the teachers, because that's the other group, if in this case says, "We just don't have a good feeling about any of these candidates," if are there other options? We have that discussion, but we also have already vetted eight candidates, and brought in the three that we thought were the best fit for our district. I think the challenge we have sometimes is timing, and so, right now, we're at the end of April, so that, that becomes an issue as well. Luckily, I think Mr. Beckel was a fantastic hire that we're lucky to have, and so, that's not always going to be the case if we're, if we're looking at for an applicant, because contracts have already been signed for the next year, all of those things are already in play. So, we do consider it, but I also think that the conversation is, for what reasons? Right? Are they, are they things that, by having that second call, those were cleared up, or not? And I think that becomes the question.
Thanks, I think that helped me. Did you have some good discussion out there, or by 15 to 6 o'clock?
Absolutely.
Good.
It's fun to meet some parents, and, yeah, it's great discussions.
Good.
And the interview process too, it was great to meet some teachers, administrators, people. the administrators, people, absolutely.
Great, we have the benefit of having your resume. But a little bit about yourself, just for the people that didn't maybe get to. You know, and I say this for the community, for the benefit of everybody, right? I don't want to, I'm not at all trying to investigate or, I just want to know more about Mr. Beckel.
Absolutely, thanks for asking too.
Yeah.
I grew up on the South Side of Des Moines, went to Lincoln High School. From there, went to Iowa Central, played some football per year. And then after year one, went to University of Iowa, studied education. Started out as a pharmacy major. Got the organic chemistry kicking my butt. I was like, what do I do now, you know? Talking to, talking to the administrator there, they said, hey, what are you interested in? I said, I like sports, I like working with people. And they kind of helped me find this avenue towards education. And it's so fortunate that we did. You know, it's just been a blessing, just the biggest piece of just making an impact on students' lives. So I absolutely loved it. I started my teaching career in Washington, Iowa, taught physical science. From there, I got a phone call from my high school athletic director, whose name was Kyle Black at the time. He was my high school football coach. He says, hey Adam, I've got football, I've got track, I've got science openings. I heard that's what you do. And I said, yeah, absolutely. He goes, you want to come work at Lincoln? And I had to check with Ross, we were checking my line. I said, you want to move to Des Moines? She said, absolutely, we'll do it. So I went back to my alma mater, taught first science and chemistry there, believe it or not. So actually learned more teaching the class than I did going through the class. So I absolutely loved it. Taught there for seven years. Worked on my administrative degree through Drake. Became a school improvement leader, so a curriculum instruction, also teachers. After three years of doing that, had an opportunity to do a vice principal role at Lincoln High School. Interesting part of being at a place where you were the student, a teacher, and then administrator. Several teachers like, oh my goodness, now you're going to evaluate me. So it was cool. I mean, it was, it's great, has a great relationship with teachers there. And Des Moines Public Schools went through a restructuring process in 2019, or 2018, 19, where they cut mid-level administrators, had us all re-implied for our jobs. In that process, I had thrown my application out a couple places, landed a couple schools. And it was just a great opportunity, couldn't pass it up. Once I got that job offer, I was three-fourths of the way through the interview process to get my job back and went public. But had that off from the table, had to make a decision, and couldn't pass it up. I've had a great four years in public schools. There is a rumor out there that I'm unemployed, that is not true. Having a great final year at public schools, transitioning them to a new teacher. But I have learned so much. I've gotten to work with the great administrative team there. It's been a great town, great kids, great teachers. I've gotten to experience some really awesome things. Like our marching band was part of the Rose Bowl parade this year. So it was just awesome, just great things. But it's just time for a change for me. As you can imagine, kind of leading through COVID, many of you probably experienced that year. You just go through some hard things. It's like, you know, for my personal self, it's just time to slap the jukebox, play another song, kind of thing. So let's see what opportunities are out there. And my relationship with Mr. Weber created a situation where I got to hear some of the great things happening. I had to, you know, Arvin mentioned in the past, he worked at Lincoln, I worked at Lincoln. And it was just a great relationship where I could call him for advice, he'd call me for advice on things that are going on, and take the opportunity to kind of brag about what we had, right? And just kind of hear him talk about things, I was like, man, I want to be a part of that. So with the opening, I was like, you know, I'm going to give a shot and see what happens. And I hope if you guys improve it, I can kind of bring some of my skills through. I think that's...
Biggest reservations or hesitations or scared, there's got to be some, right? Anything you're concerned about?
No, I've been a part of a lot of different programs, a lot of different districts. You know, I shouldn't say a lot, but Des Moines, Pella, Washington. In education, we go through things, right? You know, so it sounds like you guys might be going through some things right now. Hopefully, I can bring some skills there. You know, that's my, I hope I can have an impact here, a positive impact on our school and our kids. I wish Ross was still there. I want to say, hey, thanks for that shout-out, I'm excited to come up with them. But he did a great job with the board report, just super proud. Every time I've seen the kids here, the parents I've talked to, everybody just super proud to be a roadrunner. And I'm grateful to that team.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Beckel?
I-35 is smaller than the other schools who've been administrative out. So why I-35? On top of what you've already said.
Absolutely. The biggest piece for me is I feel like the values that I've heard from parents, former parents, teachers, just a lot of people I've talked to in this district. You know, as you guys are interviewing me, I'm going to interview you too, right? I just feel like the values align with my values. You know, hardworking, or earning everything that you get, you know what I mean? The tight-knit community, those are all things that I'm really interested in. And that are my values as well. Yeah, I'm super excited to join now.
So do you, in a normal environment, you go looking for a job before you quit? Or is education different? Or can you help understand why you resigned from the job you were going to?
Yeah, I was looking for a change. And out of respect for public schools, my contract was due a couple weeks prior to applying for this job. And I wanted that district to be able to find a great replacement. You know, so if I'm looking for a change out of respect for them, I didn't want to put it down the road. I didn't want to delay it any longer, like Mr. Dimpinger, they just talked about this. The later you go in the education season, the harder it is to find good replacements. And it was important for me to find a good replacement at public schools. We were fortunate that the middle school principal moved up into the role. And now we're currently hiring for this principal, Mr. Beckel. And just out of respect.
Thank you. So as, as I'm sure you're probably aware, there's, you know, some rumors going around. Am I going to get into the details of that? Nor do I know the details of that. But could you just shed some light a little bit on how you're going to handle questions like that? Or what, so far, have you had any questions about that? Or...
Can you be more specific about others?
Okay, so I have got some questions from committee members. So, you know, I think that there's some rumors. And again, I'm just trying to word this appropriately. How are you going to answer questions that maybe are something that happened while you were at the Pella District? Maybe a hard question, you know, how are you going to answer that?
Well...
Are you open to those questions, I guess?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm pretty transparent. I wear myself on my sleeve. I just, I am who I am and I'll share what I can share. Unfortunately, sometimes in our roles as administrators, we can't talk all about every situation out of respect for the other people at all. There have been some difficult situations I've been through in the past, as most school principals will tell you. And there's things that I have to keep confidential, but I can at least share that, like if there are rumors about lawsuits, things like that. That lawsuit wasn't a personal lawsuit. It was something between volleyball coach and the school. But it's one of those things, like I'll share what I can share and I'll be as transparent as I can. And I just hope people know that my value is ensuring that kids get the best experience as possible. And sometimes you go through hard things just to make sure that that's happening.
Thank you for that. What do you think one of your greatest accomplishments were in your previous role?
When I came into public schools, we had some pretty low results on our Panorama scores. If you guys use Panorama as well for conditions for learning. But the Panorama scores were a little bit low. And that was very concerning, you know, that the students felt like they're an important part of the school, feel like they're valued, student-to-student relationships, student-to-student relationships. All are number below. And public schools is a very high-performing school, especially academically. You might see them in, you know, sports, performing arts, very high-performing. So it was very concerning, like what's going on here? Why are these scores so low? So we worked tirelessly. So we started out with staff-to-staff relationships. We brought in what we call one-body-three out of, they're basically one key. But what we've really worked on is how staff interact at times of stress and then how we can support each other and be positive. You know, simple things like positive notes to each other, encouraging each other. What we call high fives, it's really that, hey, I saw you doing something great, here's a high five type of thing. So it's really, we started with adults. Because sometimes that's where your health has started, like several people went for today, starts to down. So that's where we started working, started working on top of our understanding of each other and being supportive for each other and encouraging one another. And then the next year, we said, okay, it's time to roll this stuff into students. And how do we do that? So we went to Leader B as the program we use. That's like the textbook part of it. But teaching the students like leadership skills, how to lead their own lives. And what that program really leads on is the seven habits of effective deeds. I saw some of that in one of the board reports. But it's just really teaching students how to be good leaders. How to set goals, how to follow through on goals, those types of things. But we were also working on helping students set their post-secondary plan. And it was really important to us that the teachers that they worked on, the other bases, really got to know them. So we established a home group type of thing, we call it I-lead, because it really focused on leading their lives. And then we also started to develop action teams where we get students involved in decision-making. So here are some of these hot topics for tonight. We put together an action team around some of those items, say, kids need your input, parents need your input. And how can we build, like, let's name the problem, and then how can we build something that is more successful for our school? And getting that student input, that student voice and choice on things had a huge impact on our school. So we saw our stats raise 10 points. And I know that the points might not mean a lot here, but it was a great increase. So I was really proud that I could move that needle from great to better, you know what I mean? Like it was, you know, sometimes when you're high performing, going from year to year, you're proud of that move. But you know, sometimes if you're in the middle of the road and you need to make bigger gains. So I was really proud of that increase in our culture sports there. We've seen, we've measured with Panorama. Leader B has a survey called the Measure of Results Assessment. And it really helps us dive into more specific action items. Those are good.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the consent agenda items. Ted, do we have a motion? No motion. So we do need a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Have you moved to second that?
Properly moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, items for discussion. Oh, it's a...
Yes, so this is, I actually meant to put it as an action item, but then with consideration for the conversation on the school resource officer, if we move in that direction, I want to be able to rewrite that and bring it back. And so we shared this with the community. This is, I think we've talked about this in the past, but we have, in essence, three versions of the public safety plan. There's a master version that houses locations, personnel, websites, passwords, all of that. There's a teacher version, which is more specific to what teacher's staff role is. And then there's the public version. And I know that when you read this, it's not real detailed. But the idea is, what are the things that we need to have in that plan? The communication pieces we need to have in there? And then how are we, how are we looking at all of our safety things? We have a, you know, I think that's one of the questions we've had a lot of lately. We have, I think the board has met four closed sessions this year on safety. We've had a complete revamp of our plan that was inherited a couple of years ago. We also have a safety team of district personnel. So it's teachers, you know, Mr. Gray, our maintenance director is on there, Bobby Finley, our bus driver. We have outside people, Dio, who you guys have met at a board meeting. They all sit on that team. And because, as we've said, we're not experts in all of this, but we know schools. And so we rely on them to give us some guidance. And so they sit on our safety committee. We meet once a month and review drills and do tabletop activities and really kind of think through what's happening in the world and how can we be better at what we do. So this rewrite of this plan has been vetted by the board. It's been vetted by that safety team, by outside agency. And so I have it on here for information to adopt in April. But I think if we wait and look at, you know, in hindsight of what's been happening as far as what parents want to know for communication, but also the direction we go with item C, I think that there might be some rewrites. So, you know, I think the, the prior information probably still applies.
Any questions?
I know we talked a little bit about maybe more training for staff. I think you mentioned it's done annually. And then maybe we're talking about doing it semi-annually, maybe twice a year?
We talked about doing it actually at every PD, so about monthly. Just having a, we did a one-day, November 6th, I think, was the day we had a PD for the whole day. And teachers rotated, teachers and staff. So bus drivers, cooks, everybody in the building rotated from things like Stop the Lead to what was a review of Alice training, what do you do if there's an intruder in the building? We also had a training on our crisis go, how do we communicate in an emergency? What else did we have? I'm looking at the team, because I can't remember them all. There were five sessions. And every, every person cycled through all of them. And some of the feedback we got from the staff was, while it was a great opportunity, they'd like to see it more throughout the year, so it's not like one day. And so we talked about having a one-day refresher for some of the big things, like the Alice training at the beginning of the school year, and then doing monthly trainings for everybody throughout the year. So it's a constant conversation. So that's the direction we're headed for next year. Yep.
All right, are there any other questions? Along to the board policy on lunch account. This is the second reading. This doesn't require a motion, it's the second for us to take action on the second reading. So this is an effort to create consistency with the current practice to recommend following, rewrite the board policy 7072. Do we need to read through it? Does anybody have? This is the second reading, we're seeing the board. I'm okay with it, you're not reading. All right, I will entertain a motion at this point to approve the board policy on lunch account second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the board policy on lunch account second reading.
It has been properly moved and seconded, that will approve the board policy on lunch account second reading. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, that brings us to the school resource officer. This is an actionable item. It doesn't require a motion, it's second for us to take action.
So, I don't know if your firm is still here. Mr. Weber, can you check and see if your firm is in the lobby still? Thank you. I can go through. We've been in contact and talked through this. I was tasked, Ted and I were tasked with looking at, in essence, two different options for school resource or making increased security of the school. One of those was almost like an increased presence at the school where the sheriff would agree to send a deputy down that would be kind of assigned to the school. And they would have a more physical presence here, but they wouldn't be assigned here all day when kids were in session. So the advantages of something like that were to create consistency and common expectations for anybody who has to move from just what the school is doing with the student to what the law would do with the student. And then have somebody familiar with the students, with the personnel, kind of clean up some of those communication pieces. And then there's little cost, little to no cost. Because there's no guarantee that they would be here on any given day and any given time. And so that's why I got that as a drawback. They can be pulled away for higher priorities. They're not here every day necessarily, but there would be a presence. The other task I was asked to look at is the SRO position. The other task I was asked to look at is the SRO position. The benefits for that, create that consistency and common expectations again, have somebody very familiar with our building, with the district, personnel, students, somebody can build relationships, provide training for staff with timely relevant research, there would be a physical presence in the district every day. We do have sources of funding for this. Ted and I worked, and we have the operational sharing dollars, right now it's two, the equivalent of two students, so it's about $15,000 that we can use operational sharing dollars for. But we also have fund in our general bucket of money called dropout prevention, and that budget is at about $330,000 estimated. Out of that comes our school social worker, our guidance counselors, sometimes interventionists, but there is funding in that available for a school resource officer. So in visiting with Sheriff Barnes, the cost for that for us, with all benefits, with having a squad car coming from Winterset, all of those costs, it would be about $80,000 for the district to have somebody here to do our training, to have them here with kids. And I think when you think about, what does that give a district or a school when the nearest law enforcement is so far away? I don't, I really don't even think it's a question. So I was asked to bring the two proposals. If I'm asked for a recommendation, my recommendation is to hire a school resource officer in the building, in the district. We will continue to look for grant funding to help offset the costs for that, but we do have funding for that. And the other thing, and I was talking to Mr. Van Ami about this, but the at-risk money had, when was it, about 2012, that was frozen. So whatever your district asked for in at-risk money that year, it was frozen at that. So some schools are at 2.5%, some are at 5%. And so one of the things that we're trying to advocate for in the legislation is get everybody up to 5% because we're not there yet. And we know that we have a lot of kids with mental health issues and sometimes behavior problems that need outside law enforcement. But for at-risk, for SROs, the districts that I've been in and have had an SRO, it's about building the relationships and having consistent expectations to keep kids safe. And that's what I would recommend, that's why I would recommend a full-time SRO.
So would there be, I got two questions. So for the first proposal, where, no cost to the district, would that deputy, would they be in the building as well, would they have the ability to, would there be an increased presence?
Yes.
To come in and, you know, walk in halls of students, things like that? And then secondly, if we went with the second proposal, the SRO, would we have a spaced deputy to work out if they have to move issues?
Yes.
So if we were to approve the full SRO today, what type of timeline are we talking about? Looking at next school year, or are we looking at, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, and that's something I'll have to ask Sheriff Barnes, because I know that there's a training that they have to go to. And he had talked about having two deputies go, I'm not sure the purpose of two, but when we had talked, he said two, in case maybe this woman on vacation, I don't know.
It's over about five weeks.
Well, yeah, right, right. So I don't know if they can serve as an SRO until they've had the training, I need to find that out. I think the first step was get the approval, then work with them on what the job description looks like specifically for contract purposes, and then talk about starting. So if there is, if there is a, I mean, if we can start it now, I don't know why we wouldn't.
So did you discuss details at all about being involved in, like, personal PD days?
Yes.
That type of thing?
Yes.
Making sure we're fully involved with the staff?
Yes, that's.
And then what about summer, kind of summer, you know, limited students here, you've got some staff, we talked about summer school here earlier. What's, did you talk at all about this summer period looks like?
Yeah, I think that kind of falls into our activities. We currently hire someone to work at our football games, but I think that the expectation is, is if we do a training, possibly on a Friday, like which our PDs typically are, and the training is over by 10:00, and that SRO is released at 10:00, then the expectation is they're at our football game, or they're stopping in our basketball games, you know, like there's a physical presence at different times. I think Sheriff Barnes is receptive to that, but we haven't discussed those finite details yet.
And then, so this is a contract, if it was a full SRO, that the former Madison County Sheriff would own the contract, so they own a hiring of the participant person? We have no say in who they hire, or we have a say?
I think that he would give us a say, but typically not. I mean, they usually look for skill sets that work with kids, work with juveniles, understand juvenile issues, can work with people, all of those things. So typically, I think they, you know, introduce the SRO and, I've never worked with a bad one. They usually get it right, but.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. I know, I'm not ever sat on a hiring committee for the SRO. So I just, we just work out kind of what our needs are, what we're looking for. I think Sheriff Barnes is very in tune with our community, so I think he understands our values and all of those things. So I think that, I think he knows what we're looking for.
Yeah, in the closed session, it was clear that he was in tune with us.
Yep.
And Mr. Weber, I take it since he did not come back, he's not over here?
I think he had him.
He was here for a while, maybe.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know they were here, they were gonna pop in if they could, so.
One question I had, so on the agenda, it references job description.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, and I apologize, because I was gonna add that, and then we talked about the two different options. The job descriptions we have, and there are samples from other places that have done different sharing agreements. And so I think it just becomes, if, you know, it's like, one of them was, if the city had part of the contract, and they, like, for this case, if Turo had part of the contract, this is what that job description would look like for the school piece of it. So it was just very differing ways that they use the SRO, but what I'm requesting is that we just have one here and not share with another city entity or another school.
So the job description for that position would be?
I'll bring that to the next.
Would be written by you and Sheriff Barnes, like?
Correct, correct.
Brought to us.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, it'd be a 2080 agreement, like we have with other outside entities, other schools, other cities governing entities.
Sheriff Barnes said that Winterset was implementing an SRO, she has all rights.
And I think they're, yeah, they're going through their city.
Yeah, okay, that's right. They're going through their city.
Yeah, I think Earlam is working on getting an SRO. I think that Van Meter, we've talked about their arrangement, they actually, their city police is stationed at the school. So they're at the school, that's where their office is, but then they do patrol out of the community as well. So that's an agreement they have with the city.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? This requires a motion and a second, please specify which position. I'm moved to approve a full-time SRO in combination with Madison County.
Can I move to second that?
It has been properly seconded to approve a full-time SRO in combination with Madison County. All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I just want to say thank you, this is something that Sheriff.
Well, I appreciate everybody's diligence and questions. I think conversations we've had have been meaningful and good, so, and it is time to do this.
Yeah, and I would say the Sheriff Barnes came to our, to our session when we talked about school safety, that really helped me out a lot in understanding what they really can provide, you know, there's, this is not a law cop, right? This is somebody that's really gonna dig in and help out, but I'm not trying to talk about law cops, if there's any presence. But, you know, this is somebody that's gonna dig in and be part of our school, part of our community, so.
All right, next, next item on the agenda is out-of-state travel with the boys' basketball. This is a request to have a player, a motion, and a second by the board.
So this is just for board policy, any students that go out of state, we need to just approve. So last year they went to Omaha for a basketball camp, and I think they want to do the same thing again this year, so.
And this is, this is something that we focused on in the last couple of years because you have the policy.
Correct.
We've been modeling it.
Correct.
I think it was only thing that just broke us, it's a measure.
You're right, yeah.
And the basketball camps are cut or laid, that's what we're saying.
All right, is there a motion? Or do you have the conference, I'm not really asking off the panel.
I think they're taking a ban, but I don't know for sure. We can ask Mr. Weber when he comes back, but I think they're bringing, they've taken a ban in the past, so I assume they're taking a ban, but.
School transportation, your question.
Personally, if it is.
It is school transportation, yes.
Are there any other questions?
It's an option, I think it's an option. Can you text Mr. Weber and see if he's available? I, you know, if he's working with the coaches specifically.
I'll take it from the super, Sheriff Barnes.
I'll maybe get it.
I can put a table this day in the agenda.
Okay, if we want to do that.
I'll put a table this day in the agenda.
Okay.
Is there opposition to table him? I don't believe that requires a vote, I think we can just do it if there's no opposition. All right. Tentative agreement with the teachers' association, this also requires a motion and a second for us to, to take action. Sharon, is there some details?
Sure. We, the negotiating team, met with the teachers' negotiating team about three weeks ago. The details, this was a year when we had language that could be brought to the table. Typically, we have a multi-year contract, and what that means is that staff is reassured that the language won't change in that time unless they bring suggestions and we agree to it. But it's not like the district is gonna bring changes to language in the contract. So we got a multi-year contract, and every year we negotiate salary. So this year, both salary and language were both negotiated items. So we settled on an additional $575 to the base with the step increase. So if you know our salary schedule, the more education teachers have, the more experience they have, the rate may change as far as what their increase is in any given year. And so that's what we call a step increase. And so 575 is for the whole base, and then the step increase obviously works towards the advantage of people who have experience in the district or possibly have more education. So we agreed to a four-year contract with a wage reopeners every year, and then the language that we changed included some changes to our extra-duty contract. There was a lot of cleanup we did on that. For example, our head golf coach, who has 30 kids out this year, was making 7% of the $31,000. And so all of our other head coaches were at 12%, so we moved his to 12%. So we just cleaned up some of that, we cleaned up and made sure all of our assistant coaches, all of our head coaches for middle school, all our sponsorships were reflective of kind of a consistent approach to funding. And so that's what that extra-duty schedule is. So they agreed to those changes. I did highlight the ones that were changed from last year. But they also then agreed to changes for educational lanes. So we have several teachers that are in programs that maybe are online. And what happens is, as soon as you're done with your coursework, you can get a master's degree. And so we had a teacher, typically in the past, you had to submit the lane change or the request to move over on the salary schedule by September 15th. But we had people finishing their work in October because of all the online options now for teachers to get advanced degrees. And so somebody might be done in October, would have to wait for a whole year before they could submit to have that change. And so we agreed that we would open up another date, so you could submit it either September 15th or January 15th, so about that mid-year. So if you were a December graduate, you could be paid at least a half a year at that increased rate because of the education that you might have got. So that's the process, just a little bit more detail on that. We also agreed to having unused sick days from the sick bank carry over, 40 days for the teachers. We've done that for years with the associates and the support staff. I think this is just a little bit more reassurance that if somebody has a catastrophic event and needs to be gone, and maybe needs sick days, this is where any member of the staff that contributes a day of their sick leave can contribute it to the bank, and then if another staff member needs to use it, they can use it without taking it unpaid. So that was, I think, a little insurance for our teachers to have those 40 days move over if they were unused. The service year, this year we did allow teachers to work from home on snow days. I think one of the challenges is, you're in the group at the school year, and you're, you know, you're right in the middle of working on standards or working on assessments, and then there's a snow day, and now typically, that day gets added on to the end of the year. But with technology, our teachers can do a lot of what they do from home. And so, as far as planning and those kinds of things. So we worked out that if there is a snow day or an option where we're not in school for some reason because of weather, at the discretion of the superintendent, they can use that day and not have to make it up later. The reason why discretion of the superintendent is there is because, I'll use the first year I lived in Iowa, 25 years ago, there were, I think, 18 snow days in the, in the, in the school I worked in. Well, we had to extend the day to make the hours for kids to meet the code requirements. We had to add days. Well, if you've already worked your snow day, then you're not under contract for the days that you have to come back. So that would be an exceptional instance where we had eight days, and we knew we were gonna have kids back in session, teachers have to be here then, is one. So that would be the only reason I could foresee that being a challenge, and that's why that is added there. We agreed to update the language about direct deposit, eliminate a separate category on direct deposit, and then change the employees' days because we added an extra day for orientation for our new staff members. So instead of 194, they're at 195. So those were the language changes that we made and agreed on, in addition to the wages that we agreed on for this year.
All right, Sheriff, a quick question. What was this, has this already been ratified by the teachers?
Yes.
And the process, and the only reason why I ask this is because I actually talked to a teacher of a different district who said their negotiation process is a completely different. How many times did you have to meet with the teachers?
The teachers? I think twice. We did openers, and then we met and worked through everything a second time.
How many, how many proposals were issued?
Three. I mean, maybe, maybe, maybe actually you would say this, but we kind of approach it differently, in the sense that we just want to have a discussion and come to, come to agreement. So even if they present the 40 days, I'll, they'll just talk about it, you know, so we don't necessarily make it another offer. We just talk about it, so it reads the way we want it to, and that becomes part of the original offer. Instead of, okay, we changed this order, here's our next proposal, we changed it, and it's been very well received. So I would say three official proposals, but it's very, very positive, what both groups that we negotiate with.
My insight onto the insurance committee, which I know is completely different, and it's a collaborative, you know, view, how we come together there, because we want to understand the benefits that are available, understand what the district can provide, and then work together to come together again, completely different. and then work together to come together again, complete the difference situation. But I would say the interactions that I've had in that meeting are fantastic, so. And it's good to hear that it's so good and it's collaborative because obviously our interests are aligned. We want to retain good employees. It's not easy to find all type people right now, so.
Are there any other questions or comments?
What's the change regarding the option to work on snow days? I noticed that before in one of the legislative, legislative bills.
The five-s星期日的 virtual?
Yes, for kids. So that'll kind of line up and allow the teachers to make up that time that the kids are making up, so they don't have to be here the extra when the kids aren't.
Right. And that's one of the things that we'll have to, I think the Labor Management Committee will meet and kind of work through what that's going to look like. Because that's something that we'll have to communicate with parents at a very high level, because not every kid has access to internet. And so, you know, you have to, when you offer an educational program for public, it has to be something that's accessible for everybody. And so we're going to have to talk through what that looks like, what that can consist of. But yeah, you're right, it does, it does line up with that a little bit, so.
All right, any other questions, comments? This does require a motion and a second for us to take action. I move to approve to end the agreement with the Teachers Association.
I'll see if you can move it.
To properly move and second that we approve the agreement with the Teachers Association. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye opposed? All right, and the next one is the meet and confer recommended increase. This also requires a motion and a second for us to take action.
So I talked about the two groups that we actually meet with. There's also a third group, and these are usually our exempt people. It's positions of administrators, directors, support staff that are on a 12-month contract, anybody that we would consider confidential, meaning they would handle things that would be confidential to the running of the district. So they are in a group that's called Meet Confer. They really don't have bargaining power. We just meet and talk about the things they have concerns about and then try and work through them. It's been my practice since I've started in this district that we always took the lesser of the two agreements from the two groups that do negotiate. This year, I'm actually recommending a change to that. So for all of the administrators and directors, anybody that's salary, I'm recommending the lower of the two agreements. Anybody that's hourly, I'm recommending the higher of the two. Because there, I mean, we have some secretaries that work really hard. If they were in the other group, they would get the higher of the two, right? It's a possibility. So just making that distinction, which hasn't been in the past. So anybody that's a salary position in that group, we're recommending a 3.21% decrease. Anybody that's in the hourly position in that group, we're recommending a 3.34% decrease. It's not much this year, but some years it could be much different, so.
How many people are in that group?
I'm going to say about, which group, the whole Meet Confer group?
The one that is our...
Oh, so the whole group?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say about 20. I want to say, we'll look it up real quick, like that's a spreadsheet that everybody wants to. I'm going to say 18 to 20. So then, so just to explain it in a little more detail as I look at the names, it's anybody that could be on staff that isn't covered by the teacher contract. So as an example, Rose Dickinson, our social worker, is not covered under the teacher contract, so she falls into this category. Brian Shees, who's an industrial, high T person, falls into this contract. So it's those kind of positions that aren't covered by a certified teacher contract and not the support staff group either. So they all fit into this one, kind of a collecting group.
Are there any other questions? Is there a motion that can be made at this time? I move to approve the Meet Confer recommended increases presented. Second? To properly move and second that we approve the Meet Confer recommendation, recommended increases as presented. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye opposed? All right. This will hear 24 certified budget. This is what we kind of went over, what we did go over earlier. This does require a motion and a second for us to approve. The only thing I have on this is just to remind us of why the timing is, because if we lock this in in June, why do we have to, why do we have to take action on this one? What's the significance of that? I know we've done it year on year here, I just want to remind you of the significance I'm doing here.
The law requires that, in normal years, it's required that we do it by April 15th.
Okay.
And now it got moved to May 1st, just because of the issue that counties have, the county managers have. So they extended it further.
Okay. So we do this by May 1st, but then in June, we will adjust it to...
The Department of Public Health actually sends out the information that we submitted, and then any fine tuning that they have. And then at that time, we adjust it through a Google document.
All right. I'll just try to understand this.
Sure. It's going to make sense.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I'm hearing any other kind of motion from this issue.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 24 certified budget.
We've properly moved and seconded to approve fiscal year 24 certified budget. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye opposed? All right. The resolution for debt services payment, this is also an actionable item that requires a motion and a second for us to take action.
So this is the information that Matt went through. This is paying down our debt service for the GO bond that we have for the work that was done for our renovation. So the current request is to use the $755,000 to pay that down early, and it does need approval to do that. I think the goal is, number one, to have that paid off about eight years, ten years early, and then also to save taxpayers over $1 million. So this is another part of that step.
I hear that last question, or last statement there, comment?
Saving taxpayers over $1 million?
Yeah, I don't think I heard you. No, it's good, no, it's good, it's a good, it's a good practice to have as a conservative district like ours, so I'm only joking, kind of.
I would also like to express thanks to Matt for spending time with us. This is really complicated stuff, and the language around it is a complicated one, but he seems to understand it very well and to be able to give it to us in a way that is not quite so firehose-ish. And still is.
Is that a word, firehose-ish?
Yeah, it is, it is tonight, because it is, I mean, it's pretty intense.
Are we still looking at doing maybe a work session with him, like a closed work session?
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we talked about. We did some IASB work sessions, and I think that the question is, can we kind of roll those into one and just maybe make a three or four hour, have some food and, you know, work as a board and get some of those specific things, especially if we're looking at proposals for the facilities plan and some of those big ticket things that we know we want to do to stay progressive with the resources, so.
I think that would be a closed work session.
No, that would be, yes, that would be an open work session, anybody can come, yes.
That's what I meant to say.
Yes, yes.
Work session.
Yes.
So I guess along the lines of a work session, and this is not necessarily in relation to this, but there was a time when we used to do work sessions regularly, you know, one every couple of months, and we would do it on topics like this, Matt does. He would come and expect a lot of time, and he would just field questions from us. And those are open to the public to come and observe with an answer to some of the questions that they may have too, so those are good things to do. And Matt has always been gracious all the time, so. All right. Is there any other questions or is there a motion? I move to approve the resolution for debt services. I move to approve the resolution authorizing the redemption of general obligation school bonds, series 2017 dated July 25, 2017, and levying a tax for fiscal year 2024 for the redemption of general obligation school bonds, series 2017 dated July 25, 2017. Is there a second? Second? Can we reread that? All right, it's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the resolution for debt services. Statement resolution authorizing the redemption of general obligation school bonds, series 2017 dated July 25, 2017, and levying a tax for fiscal year 2024 for the redemption of general obligation school bonds, series 2017 dated July 25, 2017. All those in favor, signify by aye. Aye opposed? Daycare handbook, this is also actionable, requires a motion and a second for us to take action.
So this is Mrs. Woods, I'm going to have her come up. She actually worked with Kristen Harris, and I don't know why it's, it's a big place that's money involved, but I'm looking to go over the specific, specific changes. They centered around payments, I think, and...
There was a little bit of behavior in there, and then a little bit of attendance type of things that made kind of, you know, budgeting challenging. So the things that I recall are what happens in that daycare setting when a student is consistently not meeting the behavioral expectations. Obviously, they fall under DHS regulation and not, you know, follow those programs and guidelines instead of the typical K-12 public school expectations, for the most part. And so within that, trying to align what we do at school and how we manage that here and carrying those policies over. So you'll see a lot of the same language from our PBIS pieces where it's kind of if a student does something once, then we warm and reteach and practice and those things. If a student repeats that same behavior, then that's a minor, and that's apparent information, and working to continually solve that. And then if that occurs a third time, and that student is, you know, kind of blatantly continuing that behavior, and that needs addressed in a very serious way. So before, I think there was a lot more leniency for repeat behaviors than what this plan allows. But we've utilized this model in elementary the entire school year and haven't had any concerns with any, really any thing. So that is that piece, and giving their staff kind of that consistency and ability to collaborate with the school staff in that way and have common language and common expectations and open that door of collaboration between the teams. One piece that I know has been a challenge is, somebody made this taller, like Mr. Beck pulled it up or something, I'm going to pull it down, so I stop standing on my toes. Okay, so like, when there is a professional development day, the daycare is generally open, and Kristen does a pretty good effort of trying to figure out how many kids are coming, right? And she has specific ratios she needs to keep, so she tries to plan accordingly. A lot of times, families won't say they're coming and then come, or don't say anything. Lots of confusion, right? It's really challenging. And then sometimes we're overstaffed on a day like that, and sometimes we're understaffed and different concerns. So trying to make sure that those communication lines between, you know, community members that utilize that service and her, so that we can be efficient and be prepared to care for all the students that need care that day is really important. So I think that's a little bit of it. And then the final thing is that budgeting thing and making sure that we're both competitive, but also maintaining that affordability so that our program can run productively and, you know, intake money versus having negative balance, so. Thoughts, questions? Did I miss anything?
I've got, I've got a question. So as we're in the credit of daycare, it's not basic, it's, who is it where the credit was?
We fall under DHS regulations for daycare. We're licensed through the Iowa Department of, oh, yep, sorry.
Oh, okay.
So, yep, I think what you're kind of getting at is our four-year-old preschool, it moved to the Iowa statewide voluntary, okay, yep.
So when we work with the handbook, does this have to go up for approval from another entity, other than the board?
No, so this one is just that daycare piece, and it follows that DHS kind of bounds, and all of what she's put in it is aligned with those regulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to clarify that, when the program was approved, the handbook had to be approved by DHS for our program to be functional, right? And the reason why we're DHS is because it allows families who are, that need extra assistance to get assistance to pay for daycare. So that's why we go through DHS. But when we started the program, we had to have, there are certain things in here that have to be in here because of the DHS approval that we have. These changes that are maybe about behavior, those aren't things that have to be approved.
Correct. And I would say that, you know, licensure is a continual ongoing, so every time she adds, you know, kids and needs more space, then that, those kind of authorities come in and monitor our program and make sure we're meeting all the expectations.
Quick question on the professional development days. Do you know if those are already pre-scheduled for the year so that parents can plan?
Yep, so this last year was the first time they did that, and they did it on the first day of PD back in August. So I anticipate that was valuable, lots of things that everybody that works here should get to experience. So I assume it will probably be that day again. This year, that was the only day that that occurred. They did have an extra day off just recently that they were closed, but they have to do, I think it was radon testing, and it has to have three days and different things like that. So I anticipate, in regards to PD days, I think the intention is to leave it open in case there are more opportunities because it was so valuable for that team. And often, we find ourselves getting through PD and then me or Kristen or different people kind of trying to go back and catch people up, and creates lots of challenges. So I think it's healthy to get them in those rooms as much as possible, but also with that balance. So I anticipate that would be one, maybe two days as we head into the next school year.
Yeah, no, I think it's great that they attend. I just wondered if it could be, like, listed, like, specific days for the parents to plan.
Yep, I think, because the handbook is ever rolling, I think that's something she'll probably put out each year and kind of hang these with the dates. And she does pretty good on social media, shooting that stuff out quite frequently, so I think that she'll probably do it in that way. You're welcome.
Thank you for using the tracked version. It's so much easier to follow the changes, it really is, it's awesome. And then, so in here, I think you see the same thing that we saw in the middle school, and I'm just kind of curious, the major versus minor, and is it also done in the elementary? Maybe I should know that.
Yep, so she just kind of snagged language from the elementary, yep. Minors and majors are PBIS terminology. And on our end, kind of, teachers had that same discussion in August of like, when does it become a minor? Or things like, well, Johnny does it with you in the lunchroom... Or things like, well, Johnny does it with you in the lunchroom and you put it in as a warning and then Johnny also does it, or in the classroom, you know, in an hour, then he gets another warning. So it's more so about collaboration and communication and opening those platforms for the staff as a team so that we know, wait, wait a minute, like Johnny did that here and here, we, we've got kind of a thing to, to address. So to me, as a staff, we try not to get too hung up on warning or minor or major. I typically say, if you don't know what to put it in as, just put it in as a warning because we have that PBIS team that can go in and if they see that repeat behavior, then they can make those adjustments for that. So we try not to get too caught up on the label, but make sure it's communicated so that everybody has that common knowledge.
I guess what I was saying is that you're observing and that there's consistency from the daycare to the elementary to the middle school.
Yep.
And maybe now in the high school, it's a point, right?
Yeah, I'm a huge fan of the early, so I'm thinking, I mean, I try to sneak that in every, like, every time I get, you know, student led assembly, different things, so I was kind of excited when you said that earlier, but it's kind of expensive, so.
But it's important to be consistent. But it's, but it's important to be consistent, right?
Yeah, yep.
I mean, my kids know where the line is, it's different for me and my wife, and if there's, you know, and so the things that I think of when I see these, even though there's concern of the minor versus major, it provides consistency, it provides a systematic process, and then it provides, if you don't measure it, it doesn't get managed.
Right.
Right?
Yep.
If you're measuring it, it gets managed, right? So that we don't have so many of these disruptive behaviors in class.
And I, and I would add to that, that's kind of the beauty of where we're at as an admin team. You, you see, we're, we're all there together, we're all in together, and we are able to have those types of conversations now where we can positively make impacts across all three buildings and so.
It seems so easy, but it's so difficult, right?
Yep.
You need consistency and continuity.
Yep, so we're on the right track. Anything else for daycare handbook? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, that does require a motion and a second for us to approve. I move to approve the updated daycare handbook. Properly moved and seconded to approve the updated daycare handbook, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 All opposed? All right, proposed increase for daycare after-school program costs, this is also actionable, requires a motion and a second for us to take action.
So one of the, one of the documents you get each month is an evaluation of our current funds and where they are. If you look at most recent information about daycare, we're seeing a decline in those funds. I think last year at this time, we had about $70,000 in that fund, and this year at this time, we're at about $4,000. Part of that, I think as we know, is when we were offering daycare, one of the only in the, in the area during COVID, we got money for that, which put us in a good position as we got started, because if you remember, that was the first year that we even had the daycare. And so just trying to get a handle on how many kids we were gonna have and how much staffing we were gonna need. We knew that it would take two or three years to get that stabilized and then that's when we had COVID. And so that summer, we got additional funding from the, from the government to have our daycare open. And so it just wasn't really a true picture of how many kids we have or how much staff we need. So we have not changed our increase in costs in, in a while. And we knew when we started, we wanted to be competitive, but we also wanted to, to make it manageable for families. And what we realized is we looked at our increases in the number of kids in the program, we've looked at the, you know, field trips that they go on, we look at all of the different entities that go into that. And then what we did is we looked at our staffing and had conversations, real deep conversations about who do we need, when do we need them? How is our policy set up so that if we have an extra staff, that they know that they go home and all of those kinds of conversations? And then we also looked at, I think there was a sheet of maybe 40 daycares in the state. And then we looked at the daycares that are just in our counties, Madison, Warren, and Clark, maybe Decatur as well, so kind of this region. And did a cost comparison for what we charge in those daycare services and what others were doing. So we're making some recommended increase changes because we're starting to see a little bit more level understanding of how many kids we have, how much space we have, how many staff it is. And so we're making the recommendation for our four-year-olds to go from $120 to $140 with the wraparound at $15 increase. So if your child does not use that wraparound carry, you don't get the extra 15, but you do get a $5 increase. Before and after school increase from $70 to $75 a week, after school only, $45 to $50. Summer, this is where we saw a lot of discrepancy, so three days per week would be $90, four days $125, and five days $150. I would say all of those costs are competitive and in almost every case, lower than what the average is for our counties, even with the increased recommendations. So we want to make sure that the daycare is viable. Mrs. Woods and Mrs. Harris are really working hard to work through the staffing. We've worked out a process by which they will get the budget pretty frequently so they can make changes as needed. But we, we think that in order to be competitive, in order to still offer those things we want kids to be a part of, these increases are gonna be needed to, to stay in the black.
And this is up to you guys, but I just noticed an email from Mrs. Harris and a little maybe add-on or concern or how you guys want to address this. But she also notes that there are students that are using the summer program, one in two days. And so we didn't go that low in regards to cost, but maybe that's something that we can add in when you make an approval or we can bring back to the board.
I think, we, I talked to Mrs. Harris about that as well, and I think the intent is to, to see where this gets us and then do an evaluation. Because sometimes being there one day is actually more cost, right now it doesn't equate to that, it's about the equivalent or a little less. And so I think making these changes and this recommendation for this year is what we're asking. And then over the course of this summer, looking at those days when we might have one. The problem is, is if you're only here for one day, but it's the day that everybody else is here, that's a real challenge. So I think that's gonna be a conversation this summer.
That, that was my question, you were talking about one day, is it a drop-in where if it takes a day, that has to be.
She did say right now that's, that's a $30 drop-in fee and that they have to explicitly kind of say and make routine. So they're gonna come every Monday or every Monday, Tuesday, sometimes it's kind of split families and they use it here but not there. Or sometimes it's, you know, we travel here but for this, these.
And anyway, you talk about staffing and all that, but when you have drop-ins and I, if you had to give kids drop-in all at once, I'm afraid that would probably curdle out of ratio.
Right, so that's where Mrs. Harris, like in regards to summer enrollment, she, she goes down to the detail of that, what date, like, you know, even the specific dates that we expect them to come so that she can plan accordingly and bill accordingly and make sure that everything's set. So there's a lot of communication going on, I think it started even kind of about a month ago, for her to collect that information and make a plan suited for the need.
And that is one thing that we are changing, that if you say you're coming on a day and you don't, we're still gonna charge you for it because we're still staffing for it, which is not something that we've done in the past.
So if we approve what's before us tonight and there are changes developed, probably.
They would be next year, they would be for next year's summer schedule, or yeah.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion on the table to take action on this?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded to approve the proposed increase in daycare after-school program costs, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the second to last item on our agenda is increase in board insurance share. This also is an actionable item, requires a motion and a second for us to take action.
So we're asking the board to increase their share of the insurance payment for teachers from $773.89 to $824.72. And also for support staff, an increase in the board share from $740.29 to $800.72. The rationale is we did see a 7% increase this year and our 7.9% increase in insurance this year, but we also are moving towards partial self-funding. And, and I think as we look at, you know, if you think about the CPI or the index of inflation and it's at 7% and our teachers are given 3, this is one way that we can help offset some of those additional costs that they would incur. We will have to, you know, obviously be very cognizant of the budget next year because this will be an added cost to the district. But at the same time, we know how important insurance is, we know how important the process is. At some point, I anticipate bringing a recommendation that we start to have some of our insurance be more equitable and having participants pay for part of it. Right now, our single plan is free, this would keep that for another year. I think as we transition to partial self-funding, we'll start to realize some savings that then we could, when we add those increases to our insurance for the first time, have, have our, our participants actually pay into it for those single plans. That'll be a shock in and of itself. We anticipate, I think, between 7 and 10% increases over the next several years based on what we talked about with Gallagher. So if we can this year, and we start to work with that partial self-funding, increase this, knowing that cost of living is significantly higher than where you raise a score, and it just seems we have to maybe watch our budget a little more closely on the other end, then I would, that's why I'm recommending it. We will have to move towards have a, a split between what the employees pay and what the district pays, probably in the very near future, but I don't think we have to do it this year.
This is a way to make up some of the salaries, your benefits, right? And this is one of the reasons why the discussions of the teachers are so good and the negotiating staff is so good because, right, it's recommendations like this.
I, I feel that, yes.
And, and I think the insurance committee was set up so that we could nurture an understanding of what benefits are available to the teachers and the staff, and it's done its job. And I think we at least started this topic by, by having that committee, so. Anyway, I think, I think we just almost might need to say, yeah, if we go through with this, you know, we may have to just say, well, at the next insurance committee meeting, if we have a 7% increase, we may not be able to wear it in the budget.
Sure.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to increase the board insurance share as presented.
Properly, uh, motion and seconded to increase the board insurance share as presented, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, and then that leads us to the last item, which I need to scroll when that comes to. This was tabled until the end of the year because the parties who needed to speak to it were out of route.
I'm very worried.
I'm gonna ask a question, someone's gonna turn around at that conference.
That is important, so she's very happy. Out-of-state travel boys basketball request.
Yep, this is something that they do every single year, nothing's changed, except for the backboard, to make sure if you have to say you travel, take care of the boys, so. They go over and do a camp, I don't think they actually stayed the night last year, but I'm told they should be this year, so I put whole dates on there to accommodate for that. And then I'll work with transportation to help the process of that.
I guess that was, that was the question on how, what was, how was the transportation, what was the process?
So, well, some of that, in the past, they've used vans, that's, that's been done in the past. And then I went to a conference a few months back, at the hall, so him and I, we talked, we talked about this exactly, have that conference, I hope we can do, they can still use those vans. We happen to have mileage, candles, gas, reverse, not just pay for it in the district, but it's not a camp, that's currently in season. So there, there's stuff that him and I want to go through to make sure the problems are resolved, so I just didn't want to wait until that may, or even going back.
And Everett, you have another question, Monica, do you want to ask from here?
Like that, baseball boys and that sort of thing?
In the past, they've, they've always worked with it in the past. I know last year, I want to say there was at least two boys that still went to the camp, they just set it up ahead of time with, with the coach, they know their goal. Now, that's scheduled, last year there wasn't a game on that night, so it wasn't an issue, so we want to look at that, but the coach is always, we're all working together on that. Yeah, the camp, the camp and the team is new, just making sure we do the right, check the right boxes.
Is it required for, if they're going out for basketball, then they go into camp?
No, no, I think they're required.
But Everett's student has the opportunity.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions?
Don't need for this camp, is that helpful?
So usually the team would fund that, meaning the, the boys either will do a fundraiser or, or ask without using previous funds that are in our accounts. So something like the Net Club or something that's done fundraisers for the boys, we're doing all those tournaments here and working towards that, that, those types of things that batsmen for. So that would like, like high school basketball, a bunch of the camps.
Are there any other questions?
Unless you want to write it, check, if you want to take care of that, set it up, we can put it by, don't get noisy, whatever you need.
I was gonna say, I think, I think I've written the council.
I move to approve the out-of-state travel boys basketball. Second. Properly moved and seconded to approve the out-of-state travel boys basketball to Omaha, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda.
The date.
The date.
The date, we need to address the date.
I don't appreciate it. I don't think anybody really cares.
So maybe you could look at your calendars and see what day works best, does Tuesday work?
I can bet Tuesday works.
Tuesday, the 23rd? No, he just has to have a date.
Well, probably I'm gonna have to budget.
So we have to have a public hearing for it, so we have to put it in the paper so many days in advance.
All right, so we are moving into Tuesday, May 23rd?
Yep, May 22nd is a Monday, then May 23rd, November 23rd.
All right, so that brings us to the end of the agenda.
Yes, 6:00 PM on May 23rd.
Is there, is there any motions to adjourn or?
The voters adjourned?
So moved. Properly moved and seconded that we adjourn, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn.